This season, it paid off and as we're kind of hearing, it paid off in more than just the gold medal. But in the memories and the friendships and just in the great camaraderie that everybody has. So thank you so much for letting us just experience that incredible moments alongside with you guys. Thank you.
Just to echo what David said, thank you for everything you've done. It's been amazing run. It just shows everybody what we all can do when come together. We can include others and really work together as a team. And really regardless of your ability, your skill, as long as we work together, partner together, include others, we can, you know, make amazing things and your gold medal is a testament to that. So, so thank you.
So it's like congratulations to all of you on this amazing accomplishment. Yeah, yeah, thank you. All of you guys, your spirit, your hard work, your friendship camaraderie exemplifies everything that's just amazing about Franklin. And our community is forever gold medalists because of you guys. So, thank you.
I sat here a couple of weeks ago, right? And I told you, you know, it's not about winning, it's about the journey. Right? Remember that? And it is, that's still very true. And sometimes in life you go through and you put all your effort into it and you lose and you fail and you make mistakes and you get setback. But sometimes when you really put all your effort in, you win. And we're just so proud, it feels really good. And I love to see you wearing those medals. I could see you out in the parking lot. I was like, I just hope you wear those all the time. That's a really special thing. It's great. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. We're very proud of you guys. It's an amazing achievement.
I'm still a newbie, so I don't know how everything in town works, but I think there should be a sign coming off the exit that says we were gold medal winner. Council, did you hear that?
Thank you, Dr. Hearn, for bringing them here. It's much, it's much more exciting to see them here than just hear about it in a couple of sentences. So thanks for coming out on this night tonight. I know you have a lot of other things you could be doing. Much appreciated.
And I'd also like to point out, we have some family members too in the audience too and want to thank them. And so congratulations to all. And I'll continue reluctantly with the rest of my superintendent's report. In lieu of the high school students, I did put together some, some updates related to the high school as well as some student events across the district. Since our last meeting, we had graduation and all of the senior week events, which were fantastic. It was really wonderful to see senior week happen in a like back to the routine traditions that we've done in the past. And I especially want to thank the volunteers who participated in the all night party, the night of graduation, which is a huge endeavor. And it takes a lot of work on the part of our community members. It was an amazing graduation and congratulations to our graduates. We are in the final weeks of school and this is just a reminder that our last day of school is a half day for students next Wednesday, the 22nd. And final exams, as I noted, will begin at the high school tomorrow. Meanwhile, across the district, there are a number of celebrations, fifth grade and eighth grade move up ceremonies, field days, carnivals. And so it is a very festive time and again, really heartwarming to see many of our traditions return. After two years of alternative celebrations that we've had in years past. We have several teams in postseason play at the high school. At 4:30, I don't have a game update, but the girls varsity lacrosse team took on Lincoln Sudbury away. The boys varsity baseball team is playing this evening as we speak. They are in the final four. And they are playing Shrewsbury tonight at Holy Cross. And the boys varsity lacrosse team is also at Lincoln Sudbury tonight. They had their game begin at 6:30. Speaking of sports, fall sports registration is already open for the fall, so that is underway. I thought the committee might be interested in hearing that a science fair club held its inaugural meeting on June 8th. And also in recent news, the world of difference peer leaders at the high school solicited interest through an application process. And 150 students applied and were accepted to participate in the Walk Against Hate, which occurred last week on June 9th. As a, the group walked together to take a stand against hate, both locally and as a response to some of the most more recent news stories. Last week, we had a policy subcommittee meeting and I think Mr. Callahan will speak later during, during information matters. But we talked about the policies that we have in place for our safety practices and for planning. And I thought that the superintendent's report might be an opportunity to further elaborate on some of the planning that happens that many members of the community are probably not aware of. If people are interested in learning more about our safety practices, there is a presentation from October of this year that Mr. Jagir and Mr. Augusta presented on, that would be a good starting place and set of resources. And then we recently reissued our threat assessment memo and our safety response information, which we typically do in the fall, but reissued it more recently. One of the things that we talked about at the policy subcommittee is our practice of having a comprehensive townwide emergency management team. And this team meets regularly. It involves town administrator and Mr. Helen's staff members, the assistant superintendent and myself, our school business administrator, our technology director, members of the fire department, members of the police department, the building inspector, the facilities director, and I'm sure I'm forgetting other folks that participate in a comprehensive townwide emergency management team. We're fortunate too, here in Franklin, because of the proximity of MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency is right here in town. And we have held meetings both in the MEMA facility and we've also held meetings at the Franklin Fire Department. We also include Verizon and national grid representatives. So we have plenty of information and emergency response information from them. And this is really intended to be very comprehensive for all sorts of emergencies that we may find ourselves responding to. In addition, we have district and school based emergency management planning. School administrators, our resource officers, fire department officials, counseling staff and nurses as needed. Focus on district and school based emergency planning. In terms of plans, we do seek to convey as much communication as we're able. But we don't, purposefully, we don't, we don't communicate all of our plans to members of the community as much as they might want or call for full transparency. That actually would put our security and safety practices in jeopardy and create some vulnerabilities. And so we coordinate tightly with the police department and with the fire department on what would be appropriate to share. We have a comprehensive emergency response manual, which covers, again, all sorts of things that you might imagine, including fire emergencies, gas leaks, evacuations, lockdowns, administrative lockdowns, classroom containments, which we use in different, different settings, bomb threats and searches, suspicious packages, disruptive behaviors, medical emergencies, bloodborne pathogens, situations that might involve a drug overdose, fights, incidents on a bus or van, including accidents, suicide threat or attempts, severe weather, and would serve as a basis for a nuclear threat. So I don't mean to scare people. I just want to elaborate and convey the depth around which we have emergency plans in place. The district also has this school safety implementation plan, which was a three-year plan that augments the emergency response plan around practices and protocols, safety training, facilities assessments and upgrades and communication systems, particularly as it relates to lockdowns and classroom containments. Lastly, we are required, and we submit to the Department of Education, annual medical emergency response plans, which are intentionally school-based plans that are intended to reduce the incidence of life threatening emergencies and to promote efficient responses to such emergencies. So again, I'm not looking to alarm anyone. I just want to convey the extent to which we have comprehensive plans in place. And we regularly meet and update those plans across a variety of emergency management teams. And again, Mr. Callahan will talk a little bit more about the conversation we had at the policy subcommittee related to your three policies around safety. Couple of weeks ago, I gave you an update on the tiered focus monitoring review for the report we received from the, related to our special education department. We have received the report related to English language development. As I had told you at that time, there's a team from the department that visits every six years to review the district for compliance across several programs. The special education report had, has since been published and had no findings. Related to English language, we have nine standards that were rated as implemented. So that would be no finding or the finding of that they're implemented. We did have three standards rated as partially implemented and our ELD coordinator has outlined action steps that we are taking to get these to be in the implemented category. The good news is that we knew about these and these steps have been underway. The first, we were cited for not enough English language development staff. And that is being rectified in the FY23 budget with the additional positions that you have approved to support the increased number of English learners in the district. Around parent involvement, DESI cited the district is having strong communication methods with regroup and our telephonic interpretation service. At the classroom and school level, Google Translate has been a main go-to. And the Department of Education is asking us to review and apply alternative translation solutions. There are some more, I hate this word, but robust applications that have since been developed. And so we are exploring those through the technology department. And then lastly, licensure requirements is something for us to be paying attention to. Most of our educators hold SEI endorsement. And some do not. And so we will be monitoring SEI endorsement more closely with our placement decisions and making sure that we're supporting our educators and earning these credentials. So those are the three areas that we are working towards. Recently, CIC, which is the testing, the testing company that had been providing tests in school and antigen testing for home use issued a report. And there's an infographic that we can post online with Franklin specific information. And I thought through our testing program, you might be interested that they quantified that 5,751 total samples were tested across 10 participating schools. 4,436 school days were saved through the testing program for students who otherwise would have had to quarantine. And that over 50,000 antigen tests were distributed to students and staff through the program. So a few, few interesting tidbits there for you. Mr. Jagir and I attended, there's a lot in here. There's a lot going on. It's only been three weeks, but there's a lot. Mr. Jagir and I attended the spring meeting of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. The focus was on race, equity, diversity and inclusion work of our professional organization. They are conducting this work internally as an organization while also developing and providing resources and support to superintendents and districts. The day started with a keynote speaker from Deputy Commissioner of the Department of Education, Regina Robinson. Regina shared her story as a woman of color, while also talking about being a parent of a child with disabilities. So she talked about having an ability to visualize educational attainment through many lenses. She presented with energy, enthusiasm and hope for the future of public education. Following her presentation, we had the opportunity for a facilitated table talk and relaying how the Department of Education can help support our work in this area. Following a break, we heard from the Assistant Superintendent of Old Rochester Regional School District, who shared insights into her story and the consequences of teaching and learning and incomplete history. Kamal Basin, the Senior Associate Commissioner of DESI, shared the existing DESI requirements related to curriculum focusing on establishing curriculum standards that support accurate information. Commissioner Riley joined the morning program and shared brief remarks on a variety of topics, including COVID educator pipeline initiatives and curriculum. The president of our association closed out the main session by presenting the 2022 distinguished service award to Jeff Parati. This award is presented annually to a non-member of MASSS in recognition of outstanding service to and support for public education and the children of Massachusetts. Jeff is the founding director of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary, Elementary and Secondary Education Safe Schools Program for LGBTQ youth. Consistently, district and building leaders call on Jeff to provide support and guidance in supporting students. And lunch followed with awards and recognitions. And I believe the DESI Safe Schools has done some work in Franklin in past years to provide professional development and support. As a reminder, we do not have school on Monday, June 20th. It is the recognition of Juneteenth. Last year, Juneteenth became both a state and federal holiday, recognizing the effective end of slavery in the United States when federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865, two and a half years after the emancipation proclamation. When the holiday falls on a Sunday, as it does this year, the day is recognized on the following Monday. So we are out of school on Monday, the 20th. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hearn. Okay. So any follow-up questions or comments for Dr. Hearn? We'll start with Callahan.
Thank you.
Really, there's, I mean, there's a lot to talk about there. One of the big things, so I think the top of the report, you just really spoke about the end of the year celebrations that are back. As a, as a dad of a fifth grader who's kind of going through a lot of that stuff right now, it's outstanding to see. I'm not personally ready for it to happen. But I love everything that is happening. So I just, I want to thank all of the teachers, the faculty, the family members, the parents of the, across the entire community that is putting together their time, the dedication to making sure that all of these events happen. The smiles across all the kids' faces show that it's welcomed and they're so excited to kind of have so much of this stuff back. And it's wonderful. And otherwise, I suppose, one, a big, big thank you. And also to, to the entire community that came on out for really the hero's return. For our unified basketball team, it was absolutely amazing. So I thank you all for, for those who turned out as well for that.
Great. Thank you, Charles.
Yes.
I'm going last names. It's just easier with the two days.
Gotcha. Makes sense. But it brought a smile to my face when I heard you say science fair club. But it was cool. Can you elaborate a little bit about that? Like what's, what's their goal? What are they going to try to do?
So I could probably have to get back to you on some of the details related to that. But I did see them advertise that they were going to host an inaugural meeting to have a science fair brought to Franklin High School. So I think they're just getting organized now, but there, there's a group of interested students. So I saw them, either saw it in the newsletter that Mr. Hannah sends out, or I saw it on Twitter, but they had a club meeting last week, Dave.
Great. Excited. And hopefully that will spur some other medals as well. And then the other question I had was around the CIC for the COVID testing. Can you elaborate? What's the plan for next year for regards to testing?
Sure. I will turn it over to Paula.
I guess. So the state is no longer funding the testing kits next year. And given the amount of, we're, right now, we're just using the test kits that we have in our health offices for symptomatic testing, but that number is quite low in comparison to what it was in the past. So we will no longer be providing symptomatic testing. And we will no longer be providing at-home tests. So basically the testing program is finished.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hearn, for all these updates. It was great to have our gold medalists in the house. And it's also great to hear about the other Franklin sports teams are having such great success. So, yeah, so I think for that day, the information on the emergency management team as well as the, the safety plans, I think it's also, that's very valuable information for us in the community to have. To know that there are now plans and procedures in place now, should something happen, which of course we all hope, hope it doesn't. But at least at the very least, we're prepared and we're giving thought to these things. So thank you for that update. And also give me also update that with the tiered focus monitoring that the, that the three standards raised as partial implemented are being addressed. So it's good to know that we're on top of these things and getting ready for next year. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. What more?
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much for that detailed report. And I'm really, yeah, proud of our, you know, gold medal winners. And I'm also excited about the possibility of the science fair starting. I personally really enjoyed, you know, participating in the science show when I was a high school student years ago. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the comments about the end of year celebrations and remind people watching that it doesn't happen without parent volunteers. I see emails come out. They're so friendly, but I think the administrators are stressed about some of the events need volunteers and they can't happen without the volunteers. And if you've ever had 300 middle schoolers in a certain place, it may be at the middle school level that your middle schooler is like, I don't want you there. I was told where I was allowed to be at a certain place, but we desperately need people to help out at your school. So make sure you sign up when you get those really calm, but behind the scenes, probably a little stressed emails. Thanks.
That's a really good point. Thank you for that. I don't have any further questions. Just want to thank you for always providing thorough, informative superintendent reports. We always learn a lot and really feel like we have the fingers on the pulse of the, of the district. So, thank you, Dr. Hearn.
Thank you. Can I, as we move on to the agenda, I'm just, would the committee possibly entertain going slightly out of order for presentation B before presentation A?
Yes, I was thinking the same thing. Yeah. Yeah. So for the community, presentation B is the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office Comfort Dog. And they've been making adorable dog noises in the corner. And so we feel like we just can't move on to the amazing civics projects until we get all the, all the adorable dog stuff out of the way.
Yeah. So I'd like to welcome, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you're representing Norfolk County Sheriff's Office.
My name is Officer Mike Mottigan. Thank you all for having me. This is K-9 Eddie. Eddie is nine months old. And we have been everywhere in the county, basically, from Norfolk. I work for the sheriff's department. So we cover all the 28 towns in Norfolk County. I'm a fine officer and who has a comfort dog who does exactly what I do. And I'm just speaking over there very quietly about how we're absolutely overwhelmed and it's the best thing that you could do. So a little history on me, I was on the narcotic unit with an narcotic canine for nine years. I retired my narcotic canine. And the sheriff, Pat McDermott, allowed me to get this comfort dog. So I was lucky enough to be able to get it. I went to a place called American K-9 Services down in Middleboro. We rescued him and his whole litter of brothers and sisters from Florida. We put him through training, a little under three months. I went three weeks. I finally got to meet him. We did all our state certifications. And here we are in front of you guys. We do a lot in veterans homes. We do a lot in schools. We do a lot in Milton Hospital, which is in my, which is over in Milton. And we go to social hospital over in Wayne. We haven't got in there yet. It's a lot of paperwork to get in with COVID and everything. It helped me out because my wife's a nurse over in Milton for 20 years. So she kind of stuck me in a little bit and it was a process going a little bit. But like I said, the most rewarding things I think I do is I just got finished doing all the kindergarten in Norfolk County. I was here in Franklin. We sent out an email before we got Eddie to name him. So the winning names were Edgar and Buddy. So we kind of combined the both of them and we came up with Eddie. So we visited all the kindergartens with the winning names, which were six of them total. There was 1,600 names that were emailed over to us from all various kindergarten teachers all over Norfolk County. So as I said, I've been doing this for a little under a month now and it's seven days a week, 10 hours a day. Everybody wants to meet Eddie. And it's a very rewarding job. There's nothing better. There's nothing better. I get to come up and I get to talk to you guys and I get to go to the schools. Like I said, we do a lot with the veterans. We do a lot with the schools, the veterans and the hospitals. Like I said, we just recently got into the hospitals. So it's been very, very busy. So I can take any questions. You're going to see a lot of me. Like I said, I'm just getting rolling. I'm going to get together with this officer over here. Between the two of us, we're going to help each other out, cover each other and try to do as much as we can in every town. Over here, like I said, my contact information is online. And if anybody would like a business guy, I can leave it. If you ever think that you need, if there's ever anything going on in the town, we're more than welcome to come over. The sheriffs allowed me to be able to come out and be out of the vote. Just kind of, he says, just don't answer to me. Answer to the public and go out and do your thing. So he unfortunately is in denim and wasn't able to make it. He just called me. He got tied up with a parade in denim that's still going on. So he asked me just to kind of come up and say a few words. So is there any questions that you could have for me or?
So many questions. We'll, we'll, we'll maintain order. And Dave Callahan?
No, just thank you so much for coming down. Hands down, one of the better meetings that we've had this entire term. Thank you very much for coming down. I really appreciate it. Officer Gold, thank you so much as well.
And I feel like if, if you're done with your question and want to do a quick visit to Eddie, that's okay. Just a little bit quiet. Okay. Al Charles, because I'm going to do that. Al Charles.
Yes. So, so thank you for your time. Much, much appreciated. I guess my question is, do you do house calls? Because we do have a chair that.
That actually is a great question. So even like dealing with a lot of the veterans, I get, I get to talk with a lot of veteran agents and they kind of want to include house calls. So it's all about safety on my end. It's just me and Eddie going into some of these homes that I'm not aware. And I have no problem with doing house calls, but we're going to have to build up a certain criteria of when it allows us to go into the house and when it doesn't allow us to go into the house. So right now, we're currently working on all of that. Kind of putting some things in policy, what I'm allowed to do, what I'm not allowed to do. I just don't ever want to put here or myself in danger going into someone else's home. And really, you know, we're used to kind of command and control. We know the situation we're walking into 99% of the time. I don't think I would know too much of the situation if I would just call go home. We're also trying to put a task force together throughout Norfolk County, which we all of us, where we do like a paging system. If there's a tragedy, if there's a house fire, if there's anything, hey, we'll put this out on the paging system. I think there's about 28 dogs right now that are comfort dogs within Norfolk County. I know Branca School Department just put a comfort dog in the school department itself. And they had enough money where they hired a handler, not a police officer or a sheriff's deputy, one of their own in the schools. They pay the handler to get the dog into training and it's working out amazing. Not that I'm trolling that.
I'm trying to catch eyes with this guy right here.
And like I said, if you ever need any information on that, I'd be willing to have to sit down and use it. The cost is nothing, but if you had to, you know, the product and the outcome. And these kids see a dog running around the school, as you have right behind me, to take no work from this gentleman behind me. But there's so much work that it's just, it's just, there's nothing better. And like I said, we were talking earlier in the corner and people love seeing me come now. You know, I was on the narcotics task force. They didn't like. So now I show up and everybody smiles. It's a nice smile and it's a rewarding feeling, you know? What else we got?
Thank you. I'm so happy that, you know, that, that is a valuable part of the, that is valuable part of Norfolk show. And you too.
Like I said, since Sheriff Pugger took over, he, he's done a lot of things on the outside. He's a big outside guy being a sheriff.
Yeah, absolutely.
And this is the first time he passed us and it took off.
Yeah.
So there's just bigger and better things to come with him being on the front line in charge. And so here we are. So like I said, we just, he wants to be out here. He wants to be talking to you guys. He wants the town in Franklin to know that we're here, we can help or that we'll be.
Absolutely. We appreciate it, officer. Thank you. And yeah, I mean, you say you have the best job in the world. I mean, I, you're hard pressed to argue that. So I guess my, my only question is what, what's, is Eddie regularly scheduled on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month from seven to nine PM?
He'll be the first.
All right. There we go. We appreciate that.
We can get a dog bed for the coroner. We can bring a tree. Yeah. Wow. Whitmore.
All right. Well, two things. So the first is my corny dog joke that everyone knows, like crack, we, we have two dogs in our household and they're, they're dog unenjoyable. And the other thing is, so we're over to a town, Franklin Pride event. I could, I'll contact you about it. I'll take one when you require it. But on the 26th, Sunday at the Town Common, we're doing a thing. And yeah, if you want to have, come by with the dog, that'd be, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah. No problem. Thank you, Dallas.
Yes. Camille, very soon.
I'm looking at Lucas. I try not to talk about my district, which is in Middlesex County, but we do have a dog at the high school. And whenever Sassy is in town and the screens say the Sassy's in the library, everybody's happy. I guess my most important question is, who's a good boy? Who's a good boy?
So he's only nine months too. I see that. So he's a rescue, so we don't know his exact age, but to be nine or 10 months would be discount. Like I said, a lot of work goes into it. We have, we are all state certified. We have state certifications. And my certification was I walked around the tractor supply store. If you've ever been in the tractor supply store, there's animals, there's everything. And you basically pass a flying colors, sit down, stay, sit and stay, all that stuff. They just, the state wants to make sure, especially going into schools. It could be as little as jumping up innocently and scratching somebody on the arm.
Yeah.
And then we know where we all stand. You know, there could be major issues. So as far as, like I tell everybody, the most that Eddie's gonna do is you're gonna feel the wetness of his nose and he might give you a kiss. If that's damning, then I don't know what else to do. But that's kind of what, what he's trained. So a lot of work goes into it on our end and it's a lot of phone calls. It's a lot of late hours. But like I said, there's nothing better when you're walking along, even with the kids, walking to a kindergarten classroom and they're instantly zoned in on the dog. It wouldn't be bad to get a full time.
I know. I know. You need to leave a number of your cards somewhere and yeah, yeah, absolutely. Could you also maybe walk him around?
Sure. So what I'll do is you guys, I'll listen to proud and then I'll try to sneak behind you guys. If that's okay and you guys call me back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate you having me. I'm sorry the sheriff couldn't come. Like I said, you'll see a lot more of him with all the events and everything planned. And we do it with the kids camp. So we did do the kids camp and it's, it's not once a week. I believe it's seven weeks this year.
Yep.
So Eddie will be at every one of those. We'll also have a canine demonstration. So I'll remind the narcotics canines now. And they'll do a demonstration for the kids and how the narcotic dogs work. And then Eddie will, you know, we'll come down and we'll see everybody then too. So you'll see a lot of us in the next couple of weeks.
So how do, just for the community, how do they find out about that camp?
So it's online. You go to the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office dot org and you go, you go onto some camps and then they'll say there's, there's seven weeks dedicated to Franklin. So Braintree does it every single week. That's where it started. And then we just, we'll not build the course, but we created a similar course that we have in Braintree, brought it down here. Last year was the kickoff year. We did it for one week. And now this year it's so busy that there's seven weeks left.
Wow.
So for seven weeks, you're gonna have it done. And it's down to baseball fields. And I know the baseball fields because I have four kids at home. My oldest, my three daughters play softball at those fields. My oldest plays baseball, so. Yeah. So it's down there and it's Monday to Friday and it's great for the parents. I'm telling you, it, it's a lot of, you know, I think you have to be a certain age, 10 or 11 years old, but it's a lot of skill building. It's learning how to be friends with everybody. It's good. It's good stuff. Real good stuff. So look it up online. It's, you'll see me there. And if you don't see me there, you find all the data is there and you find out one of this, I'll probably say, well.
Thank you. And I think it's hosted at Parmenter, maybe the baseball field. There's a baseball field behind Parmenter that gets used, but it's hosted at Parmenter. And we're really like happy about that partnership and excited to be hosting again for an expanded, for expanded program.
Wow, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me. Nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming. And just to add some detail, two of those six kindergarten classes, just for the community who may have missed the announcement a few months ago or weeks ago, were here in Franklin. So it was Mrs. Ford at Parmenter and Mrs. Rogers at Jefferson.
Great. Thank you. So moving on to the eighth grade civics project highlight.
Great. So this is a long awaited moment as the school committee has been asking to hear more about the civics projects that is happening. As you may remember, the state issued new social studies frameworks a few years ago, I want to say in 2018. Then Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning Joyce Edwards, along with a curriculum committee, adjusted the Franklin curriculum, especially the scope and sequence related to how we were teaching social studies to then insert in eighth grade a very civics focused course. And our teachers have done tremendous work adjusting their curriculum. And this is the second year of the civics projects. Last year though, with COVID and everything, I don't think that they were fully able to implement them and bring them to life the way that they had hoped. Thank you. Dr. Ashley is with us tonight, the Director of Curriculum for E L A and Social Studies. She's going to introduce a few teachers and several students who are here to share, proudly share their work with you on their civics projects. We have guests from Horace Mann Middle School and the Annie Sullivan Middle School. Remington Middle School, I think, had one of those end of year celebrations today, which was a conflict. But there is work happening at Remington and Dr. Ashley can share a little bit about a few projects from, from there.
Welcome, everybody.
I know there's a little, oh, we're all ready to go.
There we go.
Super.
So I had a little bit, Dr. Hearn gave us a little bit of background, so I'm gonna skip over some of this and get right to the kids. But basically, in 2018, Governor Baker signed into law the Act to Promote and Enhance Civic Engagement. And out of that came the civics project. So civics projects are required in Massachusetts for eighth graders, all eighth graders in public school and in high school. And in Franklin, it's our 11th graders. But tonight, we're, we're really happy to have our eighth graders here to tell a little bit about their projects. So the six stages, first they examine self and civic identity. They identify an issue. They research, they investigate, they develop an action plan. They take action and then they reflect and they showcase. So this is part of the showcase, right? All right. So we have with us tonight, we have Sam, we have Christie, we have Ryan, and we have Maddie. Unfortunately, Asher's sick, right? And Mr. Mellow is the teacher extraordinary. And unfortunately, Mr. Mr. Anthony, I'm sorry, I said Mellow. I said, yeah, Mr. Anthony is not feeling well, so he's really sad that he can't be here tonight. So I'm kind of stepping in for his place. And then we have Mr. Mellow has some students from Annie Sullivan and Mr. Vaca has brought some kids from Horace Mann. All right. So I'll let it kick off for the kids.
Domestic violence and women's rights have had an immense impact on our state and community. Recently, we have witnessed sickening examples of domestic violence in our area, which have piqued our determination to raise awareness and support victims of domestic abuse and sexual assault. As a community, it is crucial to offer help and reassurance to those struggling in vulnerable situations. No person should have to endure any acts of violence or sexism. We feel that as the next generation of our community, we are obligated to ensure that women all across our state and town have access to resources and do our best to prevent domestic abuse.
Over the course of our project, we have collected many statistics and data regarding domestic violence. Listed to the right is the most prominent data we found stated by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence. N C A D V is a nonprofit organization advocating for survivors of domestic violence. These statistics show how drastic abuse has become in our society today. It is extremely upsetting that we have become so desensitized to these acts of violence. One example is one in three women have experienced some form of physical violence.
An Act to Protect Victims of Crimes and the Public is a bill introduced by Charlie Baker, our governor. It claims to add to the list of offenses that require consequential hearings, eliminate ineffective action to address legal safety concerns, enforce more restrictions and detainments for offenders, and strengthen the ability of judges to enforce conditions of pretrial release. This bill will also include more crimes that qualify for trial, such as potential and or threatened violence and crimes of sexual abuse. There is a hearing on June 30th, 2022, where they will continue to discuss the progress of this.
Our project began with creating an informative website about the bill as well as domestic violence. As I said before, this entailed lots of research and preparation. After gathering information, we used Google Sites to create and publish the website. Our website provides statistics, hotlines, and details about women's rights, domestic violence, and Charlie Baker's proposed bill. Next, we decided to start spreading awareness by sending a Google form petition we emailed to the middle and high school students in our district, as well as their faculties. Students and committee, community members had the opportunity to sign, sending support and encouragement to Governor Baker and his team. Our petition also included further information regarding domestic violence, as well as the link to our website. To promote it, we sent the petition to our family, friends, and peers. We reached out to Governor Baker's office and we are currently awaiting response.
Shown here is our proof of action. On the left are images of our website and on the right are the results of our petition. Our next proof of action is the email we sent to the other schools and the email to Charlie Baker regarding the petition results.
As a result of our petition and website, we have so far reached a total of 236 signatures and support the Governor Baker's bill. We are very satisfied with our successful results and hope that our efforts will continue to gain momentum to help create a more safe future for women in our town. Our project also hopes garner more support and recognition for Charlie Baker's bill, an act to protect victims of crimes in the public.
Thank you for your time, as well as the opportunity to express our concerns and educate about domestic violence. We are extremely passionate about this prominent issue. We hope that the results of our project will encourage you to further support women across Massachusetts and demonstrate the importance of community benevolence and compassion.
Thank you. I'm, I'm gonna pause for a moment because I'm organizing things up here. I think we're gonna do questions in between. Okay. Yep. So if you have questions.
Sure.
I'm sorry. It's my fault. I was disorganized. Yeah, sure. Good idea. All right. We're flexible.
Thank you very much for that presentation. This kind of goes out, I mean, for for your project, for any other ones also that are kind of going out there. If there's ever, you know, feel free to reach out to us if you ever want to, you know, be happy to kind of add my name to, to that petition and to kind of work with any other groups that are out there. Please never hesitate to, to reach out. And just in, in regards to the domestic violence, just speaking of community at large, there is a domestic violence national hotline number, 1-800-799-SAFE. Just if there is anybody in the community that's currently listening, watching, that may be in a situation like that. But thank you so much for, for the project and just for shining a spotlight on that issue. Thank you.
So yeah, so thank you for your, your time and your effort and energy put into this. I mean, as we all know, we had a tragic domestic violence circumstance this year as well in Franklin, impacted their students. So worthy cause to bring up and share and educate folks on, on, on the work that's being done. And I may have missed it, but what was the website that you, was the URL for the website?
We can, we can send it, like, we can see if our teacher can send it to the community. It's like a bunch of, it's on, made it from a Google site. So it's like a bunch of random like digits. So we can see if there's a way to send that out because that's definitely something that would be great to share. And we have the link for our petition on there as well. So if that's sent out, that's also something that, yes, I welcome. So, okay.
Perfect. Yeah.
We'll make sure you get the slides.
Yeah, I'd love to just get, get more exposure for you and work that you've done because it's definitely commendable. There are people out there that are suffering in silence that don't have the help and don't know where to go. And I think this may help shed a light on that. So thank you.
Thank you. David, too.
Thank you very much for doing this project on such an important issue and shedding, shedding light on just got the legislation out there and resources there. So I mean, I, I work at the State House. I can just say it's just so important and valuable when young people such as yourselves get involved in legislative process and, you know, put your advocacy forward. And it means a lot. And yeah, it's, it's excellent that you are paying attention to the bills that are out there and, and the legislation that is being put forth. So yeah, thank you for all you've been doing.
Great. Megan Whitmore.
Yeah, I'd echo with other members for saying, thank you very much. It's really great that you're doing this.
I echo what they're saying, but I also just want to say I know many of you personally and I'm just really proud of you.
That's great. So thank you for coming to present to us. I know it's sort of a, an intimidating room sometimes and you're on TV, you're going to be on TV. And we're just so proud of all the work and effort you've put in here and you, you make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without further ado.
Hello there. My name is Shane Davy. This is my friend and partner, Jack Aldrich, who will be covering our Team Angelo civic engagement projects and the process that we went through while working on these stuff the year. We started off during our beginning of the year team time classes, we did some issue exploration. We went over like current events going on around the world. And everyone grouped together, discussed things, and we made a big spreadsheet. And then everyone kind of narrowed down issues that they were interested like on researching. And once you found that, you began your research.
And we would do our research papers in team time and English. And we would just research our issues to make a better argument to our representative, try to convince them that they should make, make an action on our, on our solution to a problem.
But to be able to do this, we had to make sure we were able to understand how like laws and bills and just legal process work in general. So during social sites and team time classes, we took the time to learn how a bill would become the law and the roles of committees and their importance. And from that, we, we went to look for who represents us.
And what, what we were doing there is we were finding who would be a good target to send our letter to once we got our issue. And we would be looking for things like who's our representatives and who has past experience with these bills and who will actually take action based on the history of the bills.
And once we found someone we felt would be a good advocate and person to write to, we began to draft our letters during team time. And we made sure they were good, formal, well-written business letters. We had to establish a strong connection or just some sort of connection with the person. And we had to give them our statistics from our research papers. And once we sent that, we would hope for a follow-up and we'd also plan for follow-up.
And our follow-up was a slideshow showcase where all, all the students would have a slide and they would have their, their issue that they're focusing on and why. They would have their solution and how, how it would work, how it would fix the issue. They would have why they're targeting that representative. And they would make sure to have their outcome, which would be a letter or a, you know, response from them.
We're gonna share a few examples with you now. We have mine. I wrote to Thomas Mercer, Chairman of Franklin. I, so I researched, I studied like the suffrage and the issues that pollinators and like insects in our ecosystem are going through. And I found that they're declining at like really strong, steady rates. And most people don't really care, even bother to know about this. But like, if this keeps on going and we lose our pollinators, there'll be very major economic and ecological like consequences for something like this. So I dug around and looked for a solution and I found the ordinance law of Somerville, which is a pretty nearby towns over by greater Boston area as well. And it kind of states that a percentage of native plants have to be planted in each public space to kind of combat invasive species and balance out ecosystem level things. And I felt if Somerville is gonna have a law like that, why doesn't Franklin? So I figured, why not speak to Tom? And see if he'll, if he's willing to do anything about it, if he's got anything working on in motion. And he was, he responded very quickly and he was, he told me some, some stuff about the green plan and changing to electrical, electric alternatives. Like the fleet is being changed to electrical instead of gas. And he also said he was gonna try to push forward the suggested ordinance law. And I'd say it was a very positive and successful outcome for that. This is the letter I got from Tom. It's a pretty, it's really nice looking formal letter.
And in my showcase, I was focusing on gun violence in the United States. And as a very, a really recent example is the shooting in Baldi, Texas at the Robb Elementary School, killing 19 students and two teachers. And there's also been, I also learned that there's 3 million US citizens who are affected by gun violence every year, like PTSD, trauma. And even the school shootings, some, some people are dying. And my solution to this was I was going to introduce a, a bill, No Backdoor Gun Control Act of 2022, which would ban assault rifles and machine guns from the definition of firearms, which would prevent school shootings. And it would like lower the rate of gun violence. And I chose to send it to Jake Aquilas in the US House of Representatives because he's my representative and he's gonna know I'm gonna vote for.
because he's my representative and he's gonna know I'm gonna vote for him in the future. But he also, he was a former Marine and he has practiced with guns. He knows what they can do. And he also has passed bills and websites he's been working on for this issue. So I knew that he was gonna be a great pick. And he actually did respond. He sent a letter back. And in the letter, he talked about the four bills that he's already been advocating for. And he talked about one bill that he's advocating for right now. And he talked about his Marine experience. And on the last slide of the letter, he talked about how 25,000 people could be saved every year if they had the Massachusetts gun laws, which I thought was just outstanding. That's what mine was.
And we included a few slides from some of the other students. My name is Jonathan Mello. I'm an eighth grade teacher at Annie Sullivan Middle School. These are my friends, Jack and Shane, that we've been working all year. Just to give you a small sample of some of the other projects that students engaged in. Valerie Woodall was focused on mental health. Mental health for students was one of the most popular topics that students were interested in, trying to get more counselors at the schools, more opportunity for kids to share how they're feeling. She reached out to Dr. Hearn, but students dealing with that issue actually reached out to a number of different decision makers and policymakers in the state and in the district. Paige Barry was focused on the impact of microplastics on the environment. She reached out to Ed Markey. She's waiting for a response. And Emily Tullock was focused on mental health and she was reaching out to Karen Spilka, who is a state representative or state senator for our district. And then Cole McInerney was interested in prisons for profit and the idea of private prison infrastructure. And so he wrote to Elizabeth Warren and he's still awaiting a response. So that just gives you kind of a sample of what some of the other students were focused on. So that's it. That's it for Annie Sullivan.
Do you have any questions at all or?
That's so great. Thank you so much. Yes, Dave Callahan, wanna go down the line?
First, I love the coordination. This is absolutely incredible. I remember kind of growing up, like you talk about like the bill becomes the law. For me, it was a video of Schoolhouse Rock. I'm just a Bill. Yeah. Fantastic. It's a classic. This is outstanding. From the beginning with the flow chart kind of outlining exactly like the entire track that you guys are doing, finding a problem, researching a problem, and then making actionable changes towards a solution is amazing. Thank you so much for coming here, for all the work that kind of went in to each of those letters. And continue to do the work that you're doing, continue to advocate for yourself, for your community. It's incredibly admirable and really just fantastic. And I hope that in the future that we can kind of continue to see these amazing showcases at future school committee meetings. It's wonderful to really kind of see what's happening down at each of the schools and what's happening. It's incredible. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So great work. The presentation encompassed everything we needed to hear. And it just shows how there's the right way to go and make the changes and not the, versus the wrong way where other people may just go out and just complain. You are actually doing something about it. You're taking the time to research, find out who to communicate with, and really being very eloquent about what you want to see changed and really follow that process. So kudos to doing that and really share that with others as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Excellent job, guys. Not nearly enough people have understanding of the legislative process and truly what goes into turning an idea into a law. And yeah, your presentation just broke it down so well. And then your, all your respective actions of writing to the different legislators with your idea and policy proposals. Yeah, just fantastic. It's, yeah, it can't be overstated just how important it is to yeah, to be active and to express your opinions and policy ideas to elected officials and to understand how yeah, how a bill does become a law ultimately and how these laws do affect all of us in our day-to-day lives. And it's great that you can trace an idea you have to the end result. So yeah, great job. Really commend you. Please make up the good work and yeah, keep this process in mind for the future when you go out and become voting citizens as well.
Great advice. Thank you, Dave. Megan Whitmore.
Yeah, thank you so much for picking such, you know, serious topics and the the education of, you know, who to contact. You know, following, researching, following up. I mean, I think that would just translate to you know, other things and you know, throughout your life, it's such a good thorough way to approach them. So really proud of this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Megan. Camille Bernstein.
I'd like to echo what my colleagues have said and also to recognize the teachers who facilitate these projects. It is not, it's a lot of work to not only engage them and something they're interested in, but help facilitate the process. And although the first group, I knew some of them since kindergarten. I've recently met Shane. He was Daddy Warvex and Annie Junior. I had COVID, so I didn't get to see it, but I watched the videos. Fabulous, fabulous. That's why you Well, he has hair now. He shaved his head, committed to the role. Yes, yes. Multi, multi, very talented. Anyway, big stuff happening. Yeah. Yeah, very true. I, the flow chart really helped me. We haven't had civics projects presentations here at school committee and my kids aren't yet eighth graders. So I don't really know the process. And so, you know, the first, the first group was a group and you all did individual projects. So was it sort of, is it student choice or sort of teacher direction? Like, how do you know how many and
They actually allow you to choose. So you can do it in small groups, you can do it in individual. And as teachers, we're still experimenting a little bit with the most effective way. You can also do it as a whole class. And I think this might be another way that I try to conduct it next year with having your class decide on an issue collectively and then break them into teams to deal with different tasks, like a media team, a social media team, or a letter writing team, that type of thing. So it's kind of a work in progress. We're still very much working out the most effective way to make change happen. So probably next year you'll see something very different, but there is a lot of flexibility and that's what kind of what makes it powerful.
And that's exciting. And it sort of depends maybe on the group you have in front of you that year. And maybe it lends itself to a huge project that needs little subcommittees. And maybe, you know, there's lots of tiny great ideas that can be worked on individually. So that's really exciting. And I think, you know, there's a lot to be said for students to work on things they're passionate about, right? It's much, much better than just writing an essay on some war and some dates and some, you know, some some events that you're not feeling connected to or inspired about. And so I think, you know, as you, as you grow and when we're adults out in the world, as my colleagues here said, you know, this is, this is what you do when you feel passionate about something. You could yell at your TV or you can, you know, do some research and write a letter and pick up the phone and and create some, create some change. So thank you so much. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
We don't have any slots.
We like variety, creativity.
I've never sat at this table. Thank you all for inviting us tonight. And I'm Rob Vokner. I teach eighth grade civics at Horace Mann Middle School. And before my friends introduce themselves, I just want to share a couple of things about the process as well. I agree with you that when you tap into a child's passion, you get a huge return. And and that's what we, all three middle schools have tried to do with the civics project. We started about a month ago just talking about global and community issues. And I remember putting poster boards on the wall and having kids fill in some, what they were passionate about globally and community level. So I learned a lot. I mean, I never knew anything about shark finning until this process. And that's one of the projects that kids worked on. We had several mental health projects trying to raise awareness. And that's really what the kids are trying to do is just raise awareness and get some results. And I had, we had a group who met with Principal Hannah at the high school to talk about. I think they wanted to blow out some woods to make some new exits for traffic. But they were, they were concerned about, about traffic. And what they really identified with that particular project was, and they interviewed high school kids and staff about, you know, kids who are trying to get out for jobs, to get out for sporting events. And there's a big backlog of traffic and how can we fix that? So there are those issues. And then what you're gonna hear from these girls tonight is their project, which was one of several that went to go reach out to the younger kids, which I think is really powerful. And kids identified issues around bullying. There's one group that wanted, that started a mentoring program for fifth graders around homework and helping them develop and build skills. These girls are gonna talk about pollution and how they talked to young elementary kids at Oak Street about pollution. And none of this happens without their passion. And none of it happens with, with community involvement as well. I mean, we have kids who are contacting, I mean, Brad Hendrickson is a rock star because he is so accommodating for a gazillion emails that go out to him to arrange meetings. And again, the skills that kids are developing, how to arrange meetings, how to set up schedules, how to communicate. And all the emails had to come through me and I, their level of writing increased tremendously. And just trying to think of this. But anyway, they, their level of passion is tremendous. And and I think raising awareness, the stories I get back from, from teachers, elementary teachers in this case, who tell them, wow, the kids were great and their kids, their elementary students were really engaged. And it's, I think it's really powerful. And I'm gonna stop and let them talk. They're the stars. So introduce yourself.
I'm Isabel.
I'm Carly Sue. We're, we did our civics project on pollution and spreading awareness on how to improve and reduce pollution that occurs.
We like picked pollution because we thought like we should inform people about how to like prevent pollution and also kind of like inform people on like trying to help and stop pollution. That's why we did it to younger kids too, so we could tell the younger generation of kids to tell like older kids and then they can just go on from there.
Oh, I'm choosing a younger generation. It helps in the future to reduce the amount of pollution that occurs and help spread the word to more people their age who also can want to understand what goes on. We chose to reach out to first graders and talk to them on how to reduce pollution, how to help clean up pollution that occurs in our world. Mainly to show like how a younger audience can one understand it in a more simpler version, but also learn how to spread awareness on it and how you can help improve our environment and our ecosystem without doing too much work that might stress you out, but enough work to make an improvement all around. We included an activity to get the kids involved to be more hands-on and help them understand more of the meaning of what pollution is and how we can help reduce it in our ecosystem. So we had a paper and we split in half. One half is a side for like ocean, the ocean and what it looks like when it's polluted. And then the other side, when it's not polluted. And we had them like show their comparison of what they believe and what they learned from our presentation on what pollution looks like versus what it'll look like once they make improvements and what they want it to look like in the future.
And one of the keys to these projects, too, I believe, is sustainability. I mean, how do you, how do you keep these things going year after year? So when they introduce, and I think of helping our younger kids, when, when our students go out into the elementary schools, you know, how can you keep that rolling and just pass that torch, so to speak? And, you know, on a funny side note, the kids are amazing. You know, the perseverance that you see in a classroom is unbelievable. I mean, they, they will stop at nothing to get information. They'll stop at nothing to get contacts. And when they don't, that's when they turn to the adult in the room. So I think the funniest thing that happened during this process for me was one day in particular, in one class period alone, I called the Franklin Police Department, the Department of Public Works, a nonprofit in Oakland, California. And just to get contact information and and I was really influenced by the kids because I'm like, well, you know, they had this kind of like this carefree, let's do it attitude. So we'll place the phone calls and see what we get back. We do have a poster they want to show you. It's a well-loved and well-traveled poster. So it's a little bit wrinkled. And it's the poster that Carly, the activity that they, that they did with the kids. And and I think it's gonna go back to Oak Street because the kids are really proud of it and they want to hang it up. Which again, we'll share with the rest of that school. I love it because it's real. It's like, it's so it's little kids.
So like, as you can see, like, we have the before and after of what they should do with our vision. So like, let's, I just, for this example, we have like right, colors. Yeah, with the air pollution and like the ocean pollution, the first like trash. And like a mass came to the ocean. And then they did like that happy version colored from that time. So they all have their different ideas of what pollution was in the ocean. But they all get like a general idea of lots of sharks.
For me, as the teacher, I, I get really energized when they come back after their presentation or they get a letter back from some of the other groups from the other middle school. They're getting responses back from these really important people. And their sense of pride that they did something, you know, they got something accomplished. It's just real energizing for me and it's really rewarding. And can't imagine what it's like for them. And, you know, these, these kids coming back like, oh my God, the elementary kids love us. Like, of course they get, they look up to you. And and you're doing something fun and cool and something you're tapping into their passion. So it's a ripple effect, which I think is really powerful. So, and again, I, you know, you said it a few times tonight, Dave, about the community and community involvement. And you know, this is beyond a classroom activity. This is, this is a community activity. We have teachers involved, administrators, people who are quite surprised when they get phone calls, emails in the community that eighth graders want contact. They get excited. So it's, it's, it's a pretty cool activity. And they do a ton of work. The kids do a ton of work. I mean, you saw the research of the other groups and, you know, all kids do that pretty well. And I want to reach out, shout out to the teachers in the other middle schools because you know, we, we communicate with one another. And we're looking, we're still, I think Jonathan said, we're still looking to refine it and come up with best practices as well.
This is so awesome. Thank you so much. Questions or comments? You guys can stay up there for a minute. You can stay up there for a minute.
This was yet again fantastic. I love the idea of going into the classrooms, talking to, to those younger kids. I hope you know too, that you made such an indelible mark on those first graders. They have the big kids, the grownups, were coming into their classroom. I guarantee you, this is something that went home about, they talked about at the dining room table. It's, it's amazing. And for all of the teachers that are involved. Uh, it's, it's amazing. Uh, and for, for all of the teachers that are involved, you know, really as you, as you start the planning process next year, if really please don't hesitate to, to tell your students to reach out to, I don't want to speak on behalf of everybody, but I sure can, uh, to reach out to all of us. We'd be happy to, to help uh in, in any capacity.
These kids don't realize, like, my students don't realize, I go home to my wife and I'm like, you wouldn't believe what some of these kids are doing. And it's, it's remarkable.
Really is. It's, this whole night has been uh, just incredibly exceptional uh, across, students across all of Franklin. So thank you so much for sharing your work. Really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Dave Balthaus.
Yes. So yes, thank you for the time coming in here, presenting, sharing your work. I love the approach of allowing the students to have the creativity to really tap into what they want to speak on and really then use that passion to, to really expand on it and bring energy to it and really keep it going forward. Um, the involvement, as David said, with the, the younger kids, phenomenal. The, the kids will definitely be speaking about this for quite some time. And you should, the students should know that your voice to the younger kids go further than probably us adults. So, so you're, you're, you have so much more power. And thank you for, for sharing that and really trying to get them to really focus on how they can reduce the pollution and really kind of improve the world. So, so thank you.
Wonderful job. Thank you so much for presenting this to us, but also for the work you did on this project. It's of course such an important issue, you know, the environmental impacts of pollution. And so, I mean, that affects all of us now, but of course, you know, generations to come. And I mean, that you had it exactly right when you're going toward, going and presenting this project and information to, you know, the, the youngest students to really hammer, hammer this home to them and get them to learn from a young age, just the, the impact that um, that pollution is having both, you know, globally and locally. And you mentioned that of course before, how now these are issues that are, you know, both, you know, global and local. And yeah, all the mindset of a phrase that, you know, someone that didn't, yeah, came not too far from here, did pretty well for himself, um, the, the phrase, all politics is local. And that's, um, that's exactly true with us. And these are issues that now might think in, you know, big, um, big terms, but it affects us right here in Franklin as well. So thank you for, um, effort of this project.
Great. Megan Whitmore.
Yeah, another fantastic project. And I, I saw you when I was at trade, holding that weather poster and I thought, I wonder what that's about, but.
I was terrified that I was gonna forget it. I told them I, I had notes at home, I had notes at my desk at school. And then I finally today, I just put it in my car.
But I know it's a really great project. We only have one Earth, right? We have to take care of it. And yeah, thank, thank you very much.
Great. Camille Bernstein.
I don't have anything that my colleagues haven't already said. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
I'm so glad you didn't forget the poster because it really, it's like the visual speaks a thousand words. It's really just so exciting and all the little, little first grader drawings and the happy sharks and it's, it's just awesome. And the ripples, I think Robbie hit it on the head there. It's the ripples there. So there's a teacher that inspires eighth graders that inspire first graders and it just, you know.
Inspire me back. They do. So.
I bet. I bet. Do you hear that, guys? That's a big compliment to you. Awesome. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Let me just finish up real quick because I don't want to. Remington couldn't be here um, tonight, but just real quick, they just sent me some samples. So Remington's all in on this too. Um, with Mrs. Ambrose and Ms. Alberg. So just two, um, there were tons of projects, but two that kind of stood out to me just because of the interest and the passion. And you see, there's a wide range of interests, which is uh, which is one of our, that we'll see some of those first graders when they're eighth graders probably come and do a civics project on pollution, right? Um, and then also the kids in eighth grade, they can also continue these projects in 11th grade so they can change or they might want to continue on um in 11th grade into like more complex or to continue on. So that's another, um, another avenue. So in Remington, they, uh, one of the groups worked on social media. They were really concerned about censorship and limiting rights to free speech, really heavy-duty, uh, complex thinking and just looking into um, some of their solutions were unbiased monitoring of social media posts and just how, how that would happen and reaching out to, um, reaching out um to people about that. And then poverty was another, another project, really thinking about how it affects people locally and um, in the world and what could be done, what could be done. They really talked about raising awareness, education opportunities. Um, and they really kind of got into existing government programs and did a lot of research, which was really interesting, just about increasing employment, unemployment insurance they were researching. They're talking about childcare, senior care programs, earned tax income credit. Um, so really like diving into um, solutions for poverty. Um, so great job. So good, big shout out to Remington as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
So, yeah. Sure, yeah.
So, I guess this is Dr. Hearn into Mr. Gere. Do we have another district newsletter before the end of this year?
We do.
Is it possible to get like links to like their presentations or repository where folks can look at it? As a parent, I would think, as a fifth grader going, it's kind of a fifth grader going to the sixth grade, I'd love to know about this and what he's gonna have in eighth grade. And I think other families would love to see this and experience what other kids are doing. So.
Yeah, we can work towards getting some samples um put in the district newsletter. We will, I just want to say this for um any parents who might be watching, you know, we would look for permissions. We won't take anybody's work without um credit and approval, but we can work on providing some providing some samples.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else have questions? Okay. All right, moving on. Space Needs presentation.
So I'm gonna shift over to the laptop, but I want to say my thanks to our students and teachers and their families. Um, yeah, and their families for coming out tonight and sharing the civics projects. We really, really appreciate it. You're doing amazing work.
I love the delay as everyone's having to say hi to Ben Franklin on the way out.
Did I say something?
I don't know why.
I'm taking this personally.
I know, they thought you said you needed a spin.
That was Steve Sherlock. Okay.
Elise, thank you for saying.
Okay, Space Needs.
All right, uh, we'll switch to the PowerPoint.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, changing accounts.
All good.
Nice capstone.
I think there should be some requisite dad jokes with every presentation.
Dad jokes?
Yeah, every presentation should have some dad jokes.
Like Doc on.
Yeah. Okay. For next time.
Let's make sure we have our quote ready.
Thank you. For those of you that are at home, we're just having a little technical delay with the projector. We're just building anticipation.
This is riveting, Space Needs. I feel like.
How about all about that? Instead of all about that space, you could do all about that space.
I actually use that for my kids to teach them about MLA citation. It's all about that space, about that space, no comma.
So you could, you could adopt that song.
I'm vamping here while we're getting ready.
So for the next three hours, we'll. So we'll just start, start both the agenda real quick and then just give you a sense of what we'll talk through and then we'll get into the content. Um, so for our agenda, um, we'll start off with the twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-two Space Needs and Facility Assessment Subcommittee summary. So really just summarizing what we've done. Um, we'll jump into some external factors just to make sure you're aware of what may be impacting the town or not impacting the town. And then we'll jump into a deeper dive of each of the facilities and just give you a sense of what we've identified during our assessment. And then last but not least, we'll end it with some recommendations and, and next steps. Um, so moving on to just the summary, um, as you can see here on the slide, just wanted to really make sure that you all understood what the purpose of the subcommittee was about. Um, this was not a committee deciding on any changes. It was really more of a, a fact-finding committee um, to help us determine what is our next potential steps and then really uh, get everybody up to speed on where we're at from a facility standpoint. Um, so we did an internal assessment of our, our facilities. Uh, this was a combination of work with Elise, Denise, um, Dr. Hearn, Paul Morado, um, Mary Goodman, uh, Mr. Gere as well. And uh, really just an assessment of really what we're, what we're spacing it from a, from a facility standpoint. We reviewed some documentation from previous school committees, uh, Space Needs work. We've reviewed um, data that we've had readily available or we had to dig for. Then from there, really what we're doing now, it's communicating the findings to all of you so that you are aware of what we found and just get a sense of what we're at. And then last but not least, developing what is our path forward. Now that we've identified some of these issues or items, what do we do next and what's, what are the next steps? So you all may be asking yourself, well, why now? So first and foremost, the, the last time we really did something of this nature from a redistricting standpoint was back in uh, two thousand and two when we opened Keller and Andy Sullivan. Um, and at that time Franklin was in a different place. We were, we had expanded growth, um, and needed space. Uh, we were busting at the seams. So the, the creation of Andy Sullivan and Keller was, was done to help address that, that concern. Also, since we've done, uh, since we've not counting Davis there, since we've last done a Space Needs Subcommittee, the use of spaces, it's significantly evolved between what we're seeing in COVID, where we're having more space needs, what we're seeing with our specialized programs, where we're looking for more space and then really how we teach our students has evolved as well. It's no longer what folks expect, such as sitting at a desk and working individually. Now it's more group work, collaborative work, um, leveraging space differently so that you can be more effective and uh really just be collaborative. Also, when we closed Davis there last year, part of the work was to address the conditions of the building and not necessarily focusing on the district as a whole. For those that are not aware, um, Davis there, gorgeous building, unfortunately it just didn't meet the needs, the growing needs of um, the community, um, especially when it comes to ADA support. So when we closed that school, we, in the the thought to be least impactful students, we've just moved the group of students together as a whole into a facility that had the space to support it and not necessarily looked at the whole district as a whole to see if, well, how do we make this uh future-proof? It was really war. How do we take care of the, the situation as of right now? Also, we want to start to prepare for our future needs. As we've talked about all year long, we are priding ourselves in really keeping our students in district uh when it comes for specialized programs. And as I said before, those specialized programs do require more space. So we want to see as we have more students that are remaining in difference, district, how do we account for um the space that, that is required for that? Um, and then one thing when we were doing the um, McKibben's demographic work, uh, we had, it was projected that we would see a decline of students, which would help us kind of push off the potential space needs in the immediate future. However, uh, we are per their projections, there would be an increase of students um in twenty twenty-nine to twenty twenty-three. Um, and, and you're probably asking, well, why are we, why are we um seeing a decline of students? And then for the short answer, it's tied to birth rates. Uh, we're seeing lower than, lower than previous numbers in birth rates. Um, however, uh, which you probably have all heard of pandemic babies, they're gonna be coming around the corner in, in five years, which will be, you know, twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, they're gonna be going to the schools and we're gonna need that space at that point. Um, and we're already seeing some of the increase, um, especially in ECDC, which we, which I'll talk about um later on in the slides. So how did we get here? Um, we've met uh three times so far since um the, the community was established, uh, March twenty-ninth, May tenth, and then June sixth. And during this time, I've worked with Central Office to really identify key data points to help us get a sense of where we're at. Uh, this, this covered things such as enrollment, um, capital expenditures that will be um, seeing in the next, you know, up to ten years, um, district maps, um, school bus time pickups. Really a wide variety of data, assessments of various buildings and, and needs, such as what we need for space for specialized programs. Um, and then even, uh, which, which wasn't tied to this, but happened, which was great, um, the site visits as well. Um, I thought that was really beneficial to help us get a sense of, okay, what is, what are we seeing on paper and how does it actually match up to reality? So um, I think that was really beneficial and, and, and helping us tell the story for all of you tonight. So tonight, as I said, we'll review the data with school committee, uh, give you a sense of what we found. We, the, the next thing you would like to do and really talk about is um securing a, it's a consultant for a redistrict analysis and then really taking the next step further. Um, but then also partnering with the community to get their involvement so that we do have a redistricting advisory committee so that it's not a um, something that just within a silo with the school committee or the um central office. We, we do have some input from various folks from various areas. So, uh, moving on to the next slide real quick. Wanted to first talk about some external factors. And I think this is something that our residents think of all the time, especially where we've seen a lot of development in Franklin in the, the past few years in terms of apartment buildings, uh, new, new single-family homes, various things that, that would impact our school population. Uh, so first and foremost, uh, from a home sales perspective, just to give a comparison between last year and this year, um, where, while we're slightly higher than last year, um, we were not seeing that this volume is actually going to be attributing to a high um increase in, in a school population. When we looked at the, the work that the debographers have done previously, uh, they were really very, very accurate. Uh, we saw that there was a four-student differential, so um, gives us very good level of confidence that what they've provided us from their projections look to be accurate. And uh, we should be able to move forward and use that as a good baseline as what's moving forward. And in terms of the, the increase or decreases. From a project standpoint, um, currently there's about nine projects that are happening in the town across different levels. Some are um in early conception, some are further along. But what we're seeing for the most part, that they're, the two, three-bedroom apartments or condos and then historically from a population standpoint, a, a student increase, um, it's been a low yield of students. So um, although we do have some projects happening, it's not something that's gonna, gonna be a huge driver of increase or decrease of students. Ballistically, if you look at the, the district, um, we do have ten sites um across the board. Starting at our, our youngest level, which, which is uh the ECDC, where we have one site, we have currently five middle. We have currently five middle, five elementary schools, three middle schools, and then that one high school. They all follow really what we're trying to embody in the portrait of the graduate, as you can see in the graph, in the image. Just the various elements that we want our, our students to embody throughout. So then we want them to embody. What we've seen from this year's enrollment. Were as of the beginning of this year, up to, which was, is about October fourteenth. We're about well over forty-seven hundred students. Since then, with the movement and folks moving in and just shifting around, we're over forty-eight hundred. So little over fifty so, or a little under fifty students at this point. But with that increase, we are still seeing a decrease from last year. So as of May twenty, May of this year, about point six percent decreased. So it, so it is going down as our projections had said, but it is higher than we started this year. At the beginning of the year. Throughout the district, we do have seven different specialized programs that cater to various students. Different abilities, starting at the lowest level at ECDC with our integrated K. And then we do also have goals, ideas, reach, drive, our fifth year transition program in high school. And we do have plans to add two more new programs next year, which are Bright and the NEC Partner Classroom. Paul, do you want to just kind of talk a little bit about those for me?
Sure. So as I've said in previous presentations, those are our specialized programs with students with special needs. Who have specific programming needs and needing more smaller classroom size with, with specific methodologies being used. Goals as for our students with autism, ideas as language based disabilities. Reach as for students with social emotional challenges, strive as for our students with intellectual and developmental delays. Our fifth year transition program for our high school students, we need that extra year to develop those transition skills to be successful. Either in, in jobs or in college. And as Al mentioned, we're opening a bright program, which is a program, we're going to start at the high school in September. A program for students who are transitioning back from hospitalizations or may have concussions or may have school challenges with school avoidance. And we're also going to add a NEC partner program at the middle school level because we have current fifth graders who are transitioning to middle school next year.
Thank you. And as you can see with our integrated, a unified sports program. These, these programs allow our, all of our kids to be together versus separate and really just helps build a better community. One of the things that you'll, we'll, we'll see in upcoming slides. Not all of these schools have every one of these programs, so we'll, we'll talk about which ones has, have which, we'll see that called out. On the next slide, really quick cute image, we have the logo of all of our schools. And, and really this, this really just shows the, the unique culture and spirit of each of the schools and really. What they're, they're striving to. But the, the great part of Franklin is, well, they're all separate. They all then come together. You know, we have our students in ECDC that can go to any of the elementary schools. We have the elementary schools feeding into the Horseman. Annie Sullivan or Remington. But then ultimately everything culminates into the high school, really bring everybody together and it really just taking that culture and energy and spirit. As individuals collectively into the high school, really where they come together and, and show what all of Franklin needs. So really nice representation. What you see on the next slide though, and not sure if folks are familiar with this, but these are the, the district maps. I think this is something that I looked at and really had my head scratching a lot many a times, just looking at this and trying to really understand and rationalize it. When you do look at your deck, the Franklin district map header is a clickable link and it takes you to the. The town website where it really has some really great details around each of the schools, the maps. And it really will let you zoom into the, the maps for every, the various sections. But one thing that you notice is that for the most part in the elementary side. The various schools are, are kind of locked into their various sections. You have Jefferson or JFK up in the top left. You have. Remington or I can't see right now. Jefferson on the, the bottom left, you have Parmenter on the right. You have Keller, which is purple in the top right. And, and you can see as remnants of the transition from Davis to the color. That's a, a kind of a segmented area where, where we do have students that maybe in the former DT district area. That are traveling across the Oak Street in Horseman area just to get to Keller. One thing that you also notice about Oak Street and Horseman, this one actually spans Franklin east to west. So you do have students that could reside at either ends of Franklin, transitioning into the center of Franklin. We'll say to, to go to that, that school. But as I said before, each of these schools do feed up into their respective middle schools. And as you'll see, the, the only difference at that point is that the, the mapping has combined the, the multiple areas. To, to represent that one middle school. So going forward, we're going to just really talk through each of the slides individually. And really one of the things that we found about that particular facility, so you just get a sense of what we, what we saw. The format looks very, very similar, but we'll see just a profile on the right hand side. But just a little bit about ECDC for those that are not necessarily familiar with ECDC as much. So this is an integrated preschool for all of our Franklin residents that are age three to five. And it's for all, all abilities. The classrooms are, are mixed. So it, we're not segregating children based off their ability. They are working together, learning together, understanding each other and then really partnering together so that they can grow even for, further. And be more accepting of one another. Unlike the other Franklin schools, this school does have a tuition. So there, it does range anywhere from twenty-two hundred a year up to sixty-three hundred a year. So it, it, it is not your traditional public school where you're just, you're just going there. There is a tuition that, that is. Families do have to apply to the school as well and there, there is a lottery in February. The one difference though, compared to regular schools where you start in September and you, you go through July or June. Is that the enrollment is based off of when the child turns three. So while we do have children that will start in September. Throughout the year, there will be more addition of children as they go, just because they are aging into the program. And then once they do turn five, they would start school in September, in normal kid, in kindergarten program. One of the things that we'll see in this is that all the classrooms all have sinks and toilets as well. That's just one of the, the requirements to really be supportive of that environment. So talking through some of the numbers real quick, when we looked at fiscal year twenty-two. They start off with a hundred and thirty, thirty students in the, in the program. Nine classrooms in total, and then we had various specialized rooms. One was a call room, we had a motor room and also a conference room. In our trip to ECDC, that facility was bursting at the gills. The teachers weren't, weren't making space to support the kids and really sacrificing their own. Workspace to make sure the kids have what they needed to, to really be successful and, and really be supportive. It, it was really a testament to see really their focus was, was on the children and then not necessarily of themselves. And so it was great to hear. But as you can see in fiscal year twenty-three, we're increasing by thirty-five percent, going up to a hundred and seventy-five students. And at that point, as I said, they were already at, it was a high capacity and, and low space for the teachers. However, we're, we're going up to anywhere from ten to eleven classrooms if need be. That one calm room, that one motor room, and as you can notice, that conference room that they've had for themselves and has, has to be. Moved or has to be cared for in some other way. So it's just something to be mindful of when thinking through what's the situation at the ECDC and what they need for, from a space standpoint. So that's ECDC. Moving on to the elementary schools, as you'll see here, what's going to our map and just kind of the, the layout of where, where the schools are in the various districts. So we'll start off with Parmenter. Some just facts about the building. So for those that don't know, it's built in nineteen fifty-one. It was renovated in nineteen eighty-eight where an addition was added. Think they really did a really great job, but we went out there to do the, the site visit. It was unless they, until they told me which side was the addition and which wasn't, you weren't able to tell. They, they really made it cohesive and really continuous that it was, it felt like one great space. From a functionality standpoint, it's deemed to hit three eighty-four students. But this is based off of. Just base numbers that, that may, may change. So while we do say three eighty-four, it, it could be a little bit less and varied. What we're seeing though from enrollment at this right now, about three hundred and two students in, in, in the facility as of the, the beginning of the year. Or as of, as of May, sorry. This is down from last year or twenty twenty, so eleven percentage points down. So right now we're about seventy-nine percent utilization, whereas previously we're at, at ninety, ninety percent. So it has gone down and just to do just various factors. Parmenter does have NEC. The NEC program in that facility where they, they're currently are expecting to have five students of next year. We've, we're, and that's one thing I missed on the other slide. We are making significant investments in our town, in our schools and our facilities and just. One of the things that we're doing. Just for the next two fiscal years, and actually to the district profile. We're, we're spending in just in two years or at least projecting to spend at least three point nine million dollars on, on various facility needs. And these could be anywhere from replacing a roof, updating the boiler, updating a playground, just various things. So we, we do know that there is dollars that we need to spend to really make sure that our, our facilities are up to, up to date. And we're not lacking in any, any way, shape or form. All right, we're back to Parmenter. For them, in the next two years, we're looking about seven hundred thousand at that point. And as you can see, it's for our boiler and a playground. So there are things that we, we do have on our radar that we're going to do. This is just the next two years, but we do have a ten year projection. But as we go further out, the dollars may, may change based off of just various costs. One thing just to call out before we switch slides is the utilization. When we worked with McKibben's and KBA, they gave their perspective around what is an ideal utilization percentage. And, and really the, the goal is to not necessarily exceed that percentage. So, so where we see seventy-nine percent for, for Parmenter, it's, it's lower than the projection. Doesn't mean it's bad. It's, 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 we're in, we're in a good shape and it at least gives us some flexibility. If the definition of what capacity is varies. So moving on to Keller, so this is our newest facility, so built in two, two thousand and two, as I mentioned. The functional capacity of this is five thirty-six. And as, as a result of the, the combination of the two, the two schools, this year we're at five fifty-three. So we, we are higher than capacity and it's about thirty-eight percentage point increase from two thousand and twenty. Now you, you may all be concerned as well, well, color's a hundred three percent. How are they, how are they really handling the, the space needs and really dealing with all the students? The great part is, is that we do have great leadership at Annie Solomon and Keller. And they, them and also the other middle schools that are conjoined with the elementary school. There's really strong partnership to really understand, okay, what are our space needs and they do flex. So if there's a need for more space and for, for teachers, they'll communicate and make sure that they. Move things around so that both areas are, are, have adequate space. And they're not necessarily suffering or, or jamming all their kids into one small area. So if you look at, at Keller, we'll just say if you see it's a pie. They might be, color might be using seventy percent of the facility and Annie Solomon was using the rest one year. But if there's less students, they might flex and, and adjust accordingly. So there's definitely a lot of communication and it's partnership between the two leaderships. And Keller, there is strive in fiscal twenty-three, we're looking to see that there'll be nine students at that. Similar to, to Parmenter, we're a little under seven hundred thousand, six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand. For, for various efforts, be it upgrading the fire alarm panel or doing security improvements. And this, this cost covers both Keller and, and it's all been so it's not just one portion. It's, it's the whole, whole building in the entirety. Moving on to Jefferson. Similar to Keller, fairly newer building in comparison to the others built in nineteen ninety-six. With the capacity of four hundred and thirty-three students, but currently enrolled three hundred and thirty-seven. We're at about seventy-eight percent utilization, which is down from two, two thousand and two by two percentage points. And then once again, from a specialized program, we have goals, which is going to have twenty-two students next year. And then ideas, which will be looking to have nine students. There, this one here has a, a lot of planned work. As you can see, doubled than what we've seen or more than double than what we've seen in previous slides. With hitting about one point six million. And this ranges from the boiler, the fire alarm panel, an update to the basketball or playground. And then just other security improvements. So just things to be mindful of. That although it's, it's newer, there's still, there's still regular work that needs to be done on the various sites. At Kennedy. Built in nineteen sixty-four, renovated back in nineteen ninety-nine. And this is when we added the modulars. So if you're not familiar with the building. Adjoining the cafeteria, not the cafeteria, joining the, the gymnasium. There's, there are modular classrooms that are there that, I believe there's four. Is that correct, Dr.?
Modular question, or three?
Three, thank you. But they're, they're just addition of four, thank you. They're, they're used for various things. I believe there was health in there, music. I forget what the other two were, but these are just rooms for extra space that the school students can use of various things. Right now, we're looking at from a capacity standpoint, about four hundred and forty-three students. However, we're, we're at three hundred and forty-two as of May of this year. It is down two percentage points from two thousand and twenty, so we're about seventy-seven percent. And from a specialized program, we do have NEC there as well, which, which has three students. One of the things that I've, I've noticed with, with Kennedy, which is different than the others, other classrooms. Probably one of the things that, that's a little unique, when you look at like the gymnasium or the cafeteria. They actually have classrooms that are budding those, those rooms. So there's actually entrances in and out from the, from the cafeteria where, where in the gym, which is a little bit different than the other schools. As far as from a maintenance standpoint, probably one of the least. Possibly made this program, so we're looking about a hundred and fifty thousand, just from a security improvement standpoint. Oak Street. So to see built in nineteen sixty-four, last renovated in nineteen ninety-nine. Capacity is at five fifteen with the enrollment currently at three eighty-two. This one actually, well, I think this is probably one of the few exceptions. But their utilization has increased from twenty twenty, going from seventy percent to seventy-four percent this year. And then we do have Reach, which is in this per building as well with nine students as of twenty twenty. Nine students as of twenty twenty three. But one thing that's a little bit unique is that they do have lifelong learning office space here. So it's not necessarily the classrooms, but it's just the the administration currently has some space in this with this building as well. So they're they're sharing that that space. For their for their purposes. From a maintenance standpoint, as you can see, we do have work on the fire alarm panel. Which has been something that needs to be done on a lot of the different schools. But just like the other complexes, this work is shared with the high school as well. It's not just specific to the the elementary school. So those are are various elementary schools and just kind of the status of them in terms of. Capacity programs and 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 just really upcoming expenses that we should be mindful of. So moving on to middle school. And as I mentioned before. All the middle schools are fed by the 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 five elementary schools where. Those those areas are now just feeding into that that middle school. So. We have Oak and Kennedy going into Horace Mann. We have Annie Sullivan or Keller going into Annie Sullivan. We have Jefferson and Parmenter going into Remington. And as you can see in the map, as the color is. Shows those various areas for those those three middle schools. From an Annie Sullivan standpoint, I'm not really gonna talk about the. When it was built, but one thing just just to call it a couple of things to call out. Our utilization is at forty six percent, which is is down from twenty twenty. But what you can see is that complex utilization, which is that combined number for. Andy Sullivan and Keller and and really where we're at. So. Although we're seeing a low number for the utilization, it's it's really ideal for the building. And and as I said before. This helps with that flexing across the two facilities or the two two distinct schools when when there is a space needs. We do still have those specialized programs. So the strive students that are in and next students that were in. Keller would transition into Annie Sullivan, and you can see the the projected numbers there, eight and two respectively. Right, moving on, Horace Mann. Same thing, I'll just actually start with the complex utilization. Similar to Keller or Annie Sullivan, this one here, we're at sixty one percent. So. Really allowing for that flexing between the two. And I think this is, this is one of the things that. If if we if we didn't have this, we'd be in a worse space. So that they they can make those needs as as moving those moves as needed before. Rather than having to say we we are at capacity. But all in all in, we're at about fifty one percent utilization for Horace Mann, which is twelve percentage points down from previous year. So. Once again, we're we're seeing that that trend across the majority of the sites that. Utilization is going down and and which I guess is a good news in the sense that we're not in a crisis that we have to do something right away. But it's it's just a lull before we do see that increase. And. This is the opportunity to really look at what we can do now to prepare for what's to come down the road. But because of that space, we do have reach with the twelve students and then also that opportunity to add. Bright next year as well. And all we we don't know the number of students as of the.
Right, no, no. And probably at the middle school, it won't be right in September. It's a little more complex to develop a middle school bright program. So we're working, we're starting with planning stages now. But we don't know the number. It'll be a rolling number because it depends on who's transitioning, who needs it. So.
Okay, perfect. And then once again, not to talk about the maintenance, as we've talked about it with the other school. But then when we get to Remington, and as you can see, once again, we're in a good space from a utilization standpoint, complex wide. So once again, it's just, it just really comes down to the leadership communicating, working together so that if we do need some. To flex and move folks around, we can do so and and really provide. Provide the the students the the space that they that they would need. But all in, we're at about fifty three percent utilization, which is once again down from twenty twenty about three percentage points. With giving us a where we're at three hundred and eighty one students. But we do have those two programs, ideas, goals with a total twenty one students across. Added in twenty twenty three, so fourteen and seven respectively. All right. So those are our elementary schools and it's kind of the state of state of our middle schools and the state of those those sites. Moving on into the high school. Few things just to call out, and and this is a little different. A lot of the numbers that we we pulled were from the the McKibben's assessment. That was done a few years ago, and high school was not necessarily included in that. But what we do know. Gives us a sense of where we're at. So. Built in twenty fourteen and it was built for sixteen fifty. Since it's been built, it's it's been higher than that number. But as. The population has declined and as times progressed, we are getting closer to that sixteen fifty number. As of right now, we're at about sixteen seventy three and. Once again. With as we see lower students in the other schools and the middle schools especially. We're gonna see that trickle up or trickle down into in the high school and and we're gonna get to below that sixteen fifty. At at some point before we we do see. From a specialized program, there's there's a slew of programs, especially where all the other. Schools are feeding into high school. So we do have our reach program or strive. The fifty year transition program, which I think is phenomenal and gives students really a great opportunity. Just to to be prepared for what's to come after the after high school. And then bright will also be in the high school as well. So you can see with reach, we're looking at twenty one students next year, seventeen in strive. Five in the fifty year transition program and then upright will be to be determined once we get this up and running. But the good news is because we do have a brand new school, we're not necessarily spending. A lot on maintenance in the sense in the upcoming years. Though really the the big one that's coming up the next two years is the the work to take care of the bleachers. Which is about three hundred thousand dollars. So for those that were at the graduation or 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 saw it. We have our nice home bleachers that look good, but then we have our visitors that that is in in some need some repair and. Definitely something to seek over.
Al, just to point out as well, those bleachers predate this building, their original bleachers. So that project is separate from. The high school when it was built, just so folks at home don't. Think that those were built in twenty fourteen.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, so. But yeah, so that's something that that's on the radar and just to to have some equity across the board. This is Jersey and home.
Everyone is welcome at Franklin.
Right, exactly. But yeah, but that's really kind of what we what we found. The the summary of of the the three months, the three meetings that we've we've met. Just to give you a sense of where the buildings are, we do have the. Google Drive that has all of the the previous space needs meetings from. Our predecessors and then just kind of the the data that we've had here that we just distill down to what's in the staff for you. So talking about just recommendations and next steps. And as I mentioned at the beginning. To securing a consultant for just redistricting analysis. This is bigger than the school committee. I think we need some expertise outside of us, just to look at it objectively. And look at the various options to see, well, what can we do and what what makes sense, what doesn't make sense and really just give us. A a menu to choose from, to really care for what will happen. Help us over the next, you know, ten plus years, especially anticipating that. We're gonna see that decline, we're gonna see a rebound and just to be prepared so that we're not kind of caught caught off guard. As I'd said also before, I don't want us to do this alone. This needs community involvement from from the get go. So at least my 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 thoughts are that we we do have representation from faculty. Some parents, central office and the school committee, just to be able to talk it through. As we establish this advisory committee, we'll talk through literally what's the roles and responsibilities and and really. What expectations are. So that's something I want to make sure that folks are part of this and we're all coming along together as a team. To get to a a defined end goal that we all agree to is this is what we want to see. The consultant will help us figure out how to get there. I threw a just a really just a a. Potential timeline, just to get something for folks to react to, to see, one, does this make sense and it's reasonable? Looking at it, so we were talking about this now. Want to mention, really start by beginning that process to find that consultant. So following this meeting. Really begin that step to figure out, oh, who are we gonna reach out to, who are we gonna partner with, what what's the potential cost? And do all of our fact finding to be able to, at the end of the day. Secure who we'll we'll work with to to move forward. By September of this year. Securing that person that will be partnering with this work. Also in September of this year, really reaching out to the community to to figure out who would be interested in this. And then helping and then establishing that advisory committee. So that we can really begin this cohesive work to. To make sure that we do hear voices from all all impacted groups. From there, we've worked that consultant to do all the analysis and feedback and and ultimately. March of twenty three, at that point, we'd have something. Prepared and packaged up to bring back to the school committee to say, these are our options, A, B, C, D. And by by April, we choose to. Which proposal that we want to do and 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 then talk about, okay, what does that timeframe look like at that point? And this is not necessarily limited just to just changing the way the pie is cut. I mean, I think we 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 talk to the consultant and see what are all of our options. And what makes sense for the longevity and not necessarily just what's happening for the short term. But at the same time. Making sure that those options are transparent, it aligns with what our our true end goals are. And then we so we can move forward. And then next, also just really talking about ECDC, as I as I mentioned, we're seeing that thirty five percent increase. So. Is this a blip? Is this the beginning of the increase that we'll see that will bubble up into the elementary schools? So how do we make sure that our our youngest? Stakeholders are are careful and they have what they need to be successful. And same for the folks that are leading them involved in their their education. And then. Also, just looking at what are our long term needs for any new facilities. I know we've we've closed Davis there because it due to just not being able to support our growing needs. Do we need to look at all of our any of our other sites to see, well, are there? Things that are are lacking and and do we need to build a new facility to to address any of these concerns? So just really putting all options at the table, not saying that we'll do anything, but it's just, it's just looking to see. What makes sense and is it right? Is it not? And then in in essence, brainstorming before we just rule things out right off the bat. So that is it. Any questions at this point?
Can I jump in with a few points of emphasis, if you don't mind? Al, you did a phenomenal job capturing a tremendous amount of information that was shared with the Space Needs Subcommittee and really synthesized it into, I think, the most salient points. There's a couple of click, just points of emphasis that I would want to make for people, especially who are watching at home or may watch this. As it's recorded. I think that the numbers betray this impression that there's. A lot of space with like forty percent, forty six percent space utilization, some of the middle schools, and I appreciate the focus on the complexes. This analysis was done based on pre pandemic standards, and I would want to really circle back and emphasize that. Based on what the Massachusetts School Building Authority had kind of set as the standard, as the building standard. I think we're all using space differently and distancing ourselves kind of naturally from people post pandemic. We also have an increased number of small group instructional staff, whether it's interventionists. Or counselors, special educators. Really working more, special educators push into the classroom too and do a lot of co teaching, but there's more small group instruction. And so. So that's not necessarily reflected in the MSBA standards. So I think, you know, the point around we're not in a crisis situation, we don't have to do something is is very accurate. But just for folks watching at home, I want to kind of paint a picture that we're not talking about twenty four students in rows in classrooms. You know, all next to each other down the down the hallway. That it's a much more dynamic picture and there's a lot of movement, small group instruction, students. Moving around with different adults in the building to support a more diverse set of student needs. The KBA assessment also. Took into consideration the specialized programs, but at that point in time, the specialized programs two, three years ago is would have been two thousand nineteen or smaller. We've expanded into additional classrooms since then. And so again, we're not, we're not. We're not in a crisis situation by any stretch, and there may be some things that can be done to to use space a little bit more efficiently. But I think that the specialized programs. Again, the numbers are, you know, based on the 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 standard that we have as a tool to work with. But in reality, it plays out just a little bit differently. And then the other thing, and and I'll hit upon this too. The maintenance figures come from the kind of ten year lookout that Mike D'Angelo puts together for facilities. And I would just say, while those are kind of the expected projects, there are a lot of things that can happen, whether it's. Funding and revenue sources that are available, the capacity of the facilities department, the availability at this point of. Of materials through supply chain issues, that some of those projects, just because they're listed, they're pretty variable and may. May shift in terms of timeframe, but it does give you kind of a window into what those big projects are for each of the buildings and each of the complexes. And so thank you for just letting me add a few a few points of clarification. Or emphasis, not clarification, emphasis.
Thank you both.
Okay, any questions, Dave Callahan?
Yeah, um, Al, thank you so much. It was incredibly informative. Missing some comfort dogs, but otherwise it was spectacular. I I got a I got a couple of different bullets. Just want me to throw one out? And then kind of yield my time and and circle back?
Oh, no, I think you can do just do it.
Just throw it all out, okay. So uh, it to whomever. One of the things you had mentioned was talking about space utilization, you know, as we really kind of saw at doing like the site visits. There are some like, you know, the high school, I still remember, has this had that amazing room with like the glass doors and. Whiteboards on all the walls. When we're looking to the future. How do we anticipate some future utilizations? You know, it's easy to kind of look at it and say like, well, you know, it's right now, we need like a room for Chromebooks. But as we start to kind of build stuff, how do we kind of think about, well, what might students use in ten years from now? But would that just be something that we want to make sure that we kind of have like the consultants, consulting team?
I think it's a great, I think it's a great question in terms of kind of visioning. As you talk about the portrait of a graduate, there's the curriculum that you would seek to align, but then, you know, what? And that's going to involve resources, including staffing as well as including space. And so. You know, I think that that's, I think, you know, the redistricting analysis would kind of strictly be numbers in terms of trying to balance out. And make the map a little bit more efficient. But you know, there's a visioning piece around how you. And, you know, and a new superintendent coming in, strategic planning, working with the school committee and the school community. Kind of check in on that and and do some visioning and then you could align your plan accordingly.
And then something else, when you talk about the the in district specialized programs. You know, obviously, there is something that's that's fantastic. There was, there was a video talking about.
There was, there was a video talking about the unified basketball team in which they specifically kind of mentioned some of the family members kind of coming to Franklin, hearing about some of the programs that we have to offer. You know, Al, you said it was, you know, it's something prideful and it definitely is, and but not to be cold, but it also is a bottom line in there too. And I think that's something for the community to kind of understand that there's also a lot of cost savings by being able to, to have these programs and keep them in the district versus, you know, kind of going out. But in terms of the specialized programs, one of the things I saw is at the elementary school level, and I know that each program services different needs and, and different children, but most of the elementary school, elementary schools, when we talk about like the student population in those specialized ones, it's kind of within single digits. And then over at Jefferson, I think it was about like almost thirty or above thirty. Is there, is that something that we need to look at in terms of balancing out some of the specialized programs across the rest of the district?
Yes, I mean, you need to look at space, but you also need to look, what's tough too is that as a kid, if you have, say you put some classrooms at Jefferson and some classrooms at Kennedy, we'll just give that for example. So that, that means there's more transitions for students because if you do it by grade level, you know, if they get, once they get to third grade, we're going to transition you to Kennedy and you're going to have a, you know, you're going to do fourth and fifth grade at Kennedy. So that, that's one option that you look at and you want to be careful with that. Another idea we've talked about is maybe we need to put one classroom, a goals classroom at Kennedy and a goals classroom at, at Jefferson and then, you know, students, certain students in that maybe middle speed or middle school area will go to Kennedy, the others will go to Jefferson and divide it up that way where we put programs, program classrooms in each, in each building. So there's different ways we can look at it, but you know, you know, Sarah and I have been talking about that, yes, we have, it's great to have these specialized programs, but sometimes it comes to a cost, the amount of the capacity of the administrative staff as well as related service providers and, and the amount of staff that you'd need and in, and the impact on the building. So you have to kind of balance all of those things. But yes, we are looking at projections on how our programs are growing. You know, I, I will be honest, the goals program is probably the one that's growing the quickest right now, the fastest with more students being identified with autism and needing that smaller space. But I also am hopeful that once we continue to establish our MTSS systems of tier one and two supports and programming, that we will be able to keep more kids within the generalized, general classroom with some related service and pullout supports and they might, might not need the program. So we're kind of looking at that whole big picture of special education in the district and programming in the district and how to best meet the needs of students. That's, that was a very long-winded response.
I appreciate it. Too well, just to show you, okay, all right. On actually, the, the, in terms of the, the specialized projects, programs, talking about like the Bright. So, so it's like the Bright, the, the middle school was over at Horace Mann.
Correct.
Projected. So would that mean that, and this is something for someone who might be like returning from hospitalization, that a student, let's say like Remington, goes to, you know, is hospitalized, comes to return and then would be sent, sent, but then would go to Horace Mann, then to be transitioned back into Remington, is that correct?
So that's the complexity of a middle school program, the way we're, we're budgeted for, because we only budgeted for one Bright classroom at the middle school level. So that, that, that's kind of the logistical pieces that we're working on with, with the people from Bright and how to best establish that program. Because in theory, yes, that's what it would be, but is that best for students? So that's what we need to look at. So that's why it won't be up and running for September. It's going to take us some time to really coordinate with, with the Bright program, the powers that be at Bright, the consultants from Bright to help us develop that program a little bit further. So we're looking at different creative options, you know, and Brookline did have that model. They found some challenges with that model, so we're looking to other districts to see how, what their middle school model looks like.
Okay, thanks. Cause yeah, I could, I could imagine that that's, would just be difficult for the student to be in balance from.
Exactly, because you want that fluidity with that educational coach is, is, you know, communicating with the JED teachers and, and slowly reintegrating the student back into their classroom. So it would be more challenging if the student was in Horace Mann, but then really it tends Remington to do that. So we're, we're looking at different ways to, to create that.
Thank you very much. And then last one, this one might be more for Miriam. So looking at like the scheduled maintenance, it seems like it's going to account for about like two and a half percent of, at least of, of today's budget. Is that kind of in line with historically how much we spent on scheduled maintenance?
So the maintenance and facilities budget runs through the town. And a lot of the maintenance that you heard about tonight is coming from our capital plan as well as the borrowing authorization. And, and that's a little bit more, like we haven't seen the borrowing authorization happen in past years, so that's new. And, and new money that the town is borrowing for with their new triple-A bond rating. And, and so that's new money that, that has come in or that will come in to support those maintenance projects.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Great job.
Yes, thank you, Al. Yeah, thank all members of the Subcommittee. It was very informative, your presentation. You had some tough acts to follow.
It did.
But you were, you definitely had the top three presentations. Good job, good job. Now, I, I think this timeline, I think this timeline is, is great. I look forward to seeing the results all and while exploring the consultant, because I mean, we can take a look at all the different, you know, like different maps and capacity percentages and we can all, I'm sure we could all come up with all sorts of speculation, but you know, until we kind of ask like the consultants and kind of do, get some informed research, I think that's the, that's the best way to go about it. So I think, and this is, and yeah, having results by next spring, I think that's, that's great. So yeah, thank you for that. I think that's, that's an excellent approach. You mentioned, you know, back in, now, two thousand and two, the last time that we did redistricting, Franklin was more of a growing community and it's not quite the same now. And do you, or do any of us, do we have like maybe some more like comparison data from two thousand and two to now that like we can maybe shed some light on where we are now based on what happened then?
I have some enrollment information that I can share with you related to two thousand and two. I didn't necessarily look at the facilities and the, and the layout, but I think you know how it was structured and kind of set up for students to flow through the district. In two thousand and two, we had five thousand six hundred and nine students on the October one enrollment report. And at that time, it was climbing and projected to increase. We had a high of six thousand two hundred and fifty-five students in two thousand and nine. And then it's been decreasing since. So that's kind of the overall population. The other statistic that I thought was really important as it relates to this conversation, particularly as we think about our specialized programs, is the increase in the percentage of students with disabilities. So for both Franklin and for the state, the percentage of students with disabilities has increased. In two thousand and two, it was about thirteen percent. And in Franklin, and it is now eighteen point four percent. And the state increased from fifteen percent to nineteen percent roughly. So I just, I think it portrays what we know around expanding neurodiversity among our student population. And so we're kind of tracking with the similar trend that is happening across the state. So in kind of big picture terms, those are some of the numbers. But I think education looks very different twenty years later. You know, when I was talking about twenty-four students in a classroom, you know, in rows, it might, the images in my mind were from much longer ago, but you know, even twenty years, I think a lot has changed in the field of education.
Thank you, appreciate that. And yeah, I was also curious about the, the specialized programs, but Dave's question touched upon that. So yeah, thank you for, for that, Paula.
Yeah, thank you, Charles, for that presentation. And yeah, I, I think it'll, it'll be great to, you know, analyze the data, look at trends, have those experts, you know, and all the stakeholders involved to make, you know, a educated decision on we need to take in the future.
Great, thank you. Camille Bernstein.
Thanks for the methodical and also long-term view. I know that this will be done in a thorough methodical manner. It does, it's not too early though to frame people's expectations and to remind parents that should there be a change in the future, far in the future, that the way you frame it to your children can really make an effect on their experience. Should they have to go to a different school? We have excellent schools. And very often kids pick up on stress and anxiety and parents sometimes can be stressed and anxious about what their child might feel, and then the child thinks they should feel that. And then it, it just becomes this terrible feedback loop. So I don't think it's, although we're taking our time with this, I don't think it's too early to remind parents that your attitude and your openness and your willingness for information and also to reframe for your child about the positives. Because I would be happy to send my children to any of the schools in the district. And certainly we moved to neighborhoods or we moved to a town and we might have older children who have a certain experience, but that doesn't mean following whatever might happen that your subsequent children couldn't have just as good an experience. So I, I, I will probably say this over and over and over and over and over every time there is mention of the Space Committee. So thank you.
That's important though, important reminder. And I'm also glad that a couple of you echoed the word redistricting because I think it's important for us to understand that, that, that's a big piece of what the study is going to be. And so I know that can be a scary word and it brings up all sorts of anxieties and I'm a mom of two kids in the Franklin Public Schools and I hear you and I feel you. But I, I take comfort in your words, Lady Bernstein. So if you would keep repeating them, I think it's, it's important. It's important. Very, very true. Great. So moving on to discussion action items.
So discussion action items, the first discussion action items is related to facilities. So tonight you've heard a presentation, you know, kind of related to the status of the facilities with, you know, some backup information around enrollment, knowing that enrollment is going to decrease over the next three years or so, projected to increase, although modestly, you know, the projection has, doesn't forecast another six thousand students in Franklin. It, you know, goes down to about forty-three hundred and then comes up to about forty-four fifty. So, so it's, it's a modest increase. We don't know beyond that what may happen and we do anticipate a significant decline at the high school as the students make their way through middle school and, and into the high school. So they're not projected to see an increase by twenty thirty. You've seen too, that there are some pressure points in the district primarily related to ECDC that we're currently looking to problem solve. And so, so the space isn't, isn't perfect and we do have some pressure points, but still there's a memo in your packet related to Davis Thayer Elementary School. I do, I'm not going to read the entire memo, but I do want to take a moment to commend the administration, faculty and staff, families and students for their work this year. I think it's important to recognize all that has gone into developing a unified culture at Keller, Keller Elementary School. I keep on hearing, it comes up over and over again about the core values and how Davis Thayer's core values have been integrated into the school. That is a data point that I, I actually have had people echo, echo a few times. And but I know it's not been easy, but everybody's been focused on the kids and has the students' best interests in mind. As it relates to the Davis Thayer facility, I've done two updates in superintendent's reports, one in January and one in April, kind of indicating to the committee and community where we are. In the fall, we identified items to repurpose throughout the district. This included classroom desks and tables, office furniture and chairs and other instructional materials. Throughout the year and to this date, the building is in use providing storage. It has been holding some of our furniture. As you know, we've had cafeteria spaces set up with desks and so our tables were in storage. Fortunately, we have not had to pay for additional storage units off-site, like some districts have had to during COVID. And so we've been using it as a, as a place to move furniture to and from as we and to return our physical spaces back to a more normal setup in our, in our schools post-COVID. The Davis Thayer Elementary School is also where the district and the town is storing PPE, primarily hand sanitizer and masks are being stored at Davis Thayer. So the building's being maintained by the facilities department within the facilities budget, which as Miriam had talked about, is kind of accounted for within the town's municipal budget, but at a lower cost compared to normal operations, as you might imagine. Through this process, we wanted to make sure that we were above board with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. They have a provision regarding notification, you know, they want to be involved in the process. They don't want districts, although it's a local decision, they don't want districts to, you know, dispose of a school property and then come looking for an MSBA loan later down the line, but not necessarily have thought of the ramifications if that school property could then be turned around and used again as a school. They also have invested in school properties. And so if they had invested in a school, they would want to recoup some of their, some of their money back. They have not invested in the Davis Thayer Elementary School, so the financial piece isn't an issue. But I did not want to put the district in a difficult spot with MSBA by not following a process and then have them come back and say, and jeopardize a potential future building project, which you may want to consider. A new school, a new elementary school was proposed from Castle Booze in relationship to the Kennedy School, which is one of the older, one of the older schools. Although it's been, and had some renovations, it is kind of one of the older buildings. The MSBA has been responsive after, after our outreach to them and has indicated that we've met their notification requirements. So you've seen the Space Needs presentation tonight, and although there are some places in the district where there are pressure points, primarily at ECDC at the current moment. You know, our team, you know, for all of the reasons that we had heard from the architects related to Davis Thayer as a, a space for teaching and learning, you don't feel that the school meets contemporary instructional standards. And there are also concerns related to its lack of ADA compliance and also the physical safety of the facility is not up to contemporary standards. So as such, we don't feel that the Davis Thayer Elementary School would be a viable solution for our current pressure points or space concerns. And so therefore I recommend to the committee that pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifteen A, that the school committee declare that the Davis Thayer Elementary School property is no longer needed for school purposes and further that the school committee notify the town council of that determination.
Is there a motion to declare that the Davis Thayer Elementary School property is no longer needed for school purposes and that we will notify the town council of that determination as discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? No, I do just want to mention that this, all school committee members were given an invitation to walk through Davis Thayer and its current, in its current situation. Some of us were not familiar with the building at all and some of us were very familiar with the building as a school, but not as what it is currently. And so I appreciate the district allowing us that opportunity. So with that, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you.
The next discussion, actually?
Yes, the next discussion action item is the superintendent's evaluation. And so as you know, the superintendent's evaluation, we all compiled our independent data and then the superintendent evaluation subcommittee met together to average it all out and incorporate all perspectives into average it all out and incorporate all perspectives into a drafted document, which is in your packet. So again, this is just a draft until the committee votes on it and then it will become the final evaluation report of the superintendent. So I am not going to read the entire report and I know that's sad to everybody here and in Zeland. I'm just going to read a couple, a couple highlights. And then the report is public information for those who want more information. So, the introduction is a little bit about the process and then we start talking about our current landscape this past year. This year continued to be a year of unprecedented challenges for students and educators of Franklin and our nation. In some ways, 2122 was more demanding than the previous year's survival mode, because the district had to balance between evolving pandemic mode and getting back to a new normal. In her leadership, Dr. Ahern exhibited the utmost professionalism and high standard of excellence in her administration of the district business. Always prepared, relying on database decisions, Dr. Ahern demonstrated thoughtful, methodical, compassionate and ethical decision-making. So that's part of the introduction, just to get us set up here. Looking through the goal ratings, we see that out of the performance goals, six performance goals, five of them are met. And those goals are the professional practice goal, student learning goal, social emotional well-being of students and staff, engaging and rigorous curriculum, and effective two-way communication to support student learning. One of the goals was rated as significant progress, which is high-quality instruction to meet the academic and SEL needs of each learner, in part because one, one piece of that hadn't, due to the transition superintendent's wasn't completed. Out of the focus indicators, four focus indicators were marked as proficient, that's curriculum, instruction, engagement and shared vision. And two focus indicators were rated as exemplary, that's laws, ethics and policies and fiscal systems. So given those ratings, our overall final composite rating of Dr. Ahern's performance this past year is proficient. And there are a number of commendations in the report. And so since this is Dr. Ahern's final year in Franklin, when we move forward, we're, we're really looking at, looking, looking, giving feedback on this past year, which is important to do, giving, giving feedback on her performance thus far. And then when we look at recommendations going forward, we're really not looking at Dr. Ahern as a person, but more as like the district's, the district's direction, given the performance of Dr. Ahern in the last year. So a couple of the commendations, there's a page and a half, almost two pages. There's many commendations here that my colleagues were generous to share. I'll read a couple just to give you an idea. Social emotional learning has clearly been a priority under her tenure. The superintendent led commendable work around SEL-related data, assessment, budget items and communications. The superintendent often sent out community-wide emails whenever sensitive events occurred in our community or our country. Often these emails would include resources to help community members in need. Under her leadership, professional development has moved towards more voice and choice, with teacher-designed and teacher-led, that honors educators' professionalism, differing needs and their skills, while providing opportunities for them to be teacher leaders. The superintendent is consistently working towards better and more productive policies, while ensuring that all policy revisions are meeting state legal and ethical requirements. Dr. Ahern's presentation at the Joint Budget Subcommittee was an effective start to the budgetary process and led to a smooth budget hearing. The superintendent maintained a consistent focus on the long-term spending of the CARES and ESAR funding. Developing a roadmap of COVID relief funding and priorities was an effective method for ensuring all funds were spent thoughtfully and in a timely manner. As I said, that's just a sampling of the commendations in the rest and in the full report. So again, when we look at the areas for continued focus in this evaluation, it's more towards the, with, towards the district to keep up, keep up the work that Dr. Ahern has started. I'm going to read just a couple of those. One recommendation here is to continue to provide opportunities for staff to express views in a safe and open manner with regard to actions that affect them directly or indirectly. Start the process of updating the district's strategy for improvement. Continue to prioritize counselors, social workers and support staff who interact directly with students, especially as they weather the trauma of the pandemic and the general uncertainty of our country and modern life. Continue the district work of formalizing and rolling out the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, including restorative practices. So that's just a little sampling. And then just to conclude to, for the, the, the final summary, I suppose. After five years as superintendent of the Franklin Public Schools, Dr. Ahern is leaving to lead a district closer to home. Under her leadership, the Franklin Public Schools have flourished. She has consistently exhibited courage and aplomb in the face of challenges and she has always maintained a focus on doing the right thing for our students and our school community as a whole. So, I have language on this. So the acting chair recommends approval of the superintendent's evaluation as discussed. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions, discussions, any edits? I know you all had the report in your, well, you run the subcommittee, you know. You had the report in your packet. So as you went through, did you, did you feel like your perspectives were represented and reflected there?
Yes.
Great. Good job, team. Okay, so seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And I always, if I can just jump in for one second and react, I want to thank you for all the time that you took individually to put together your individual remarks, as well as what the subcommittee did to synthesize them in a meeting last week to put together the final report. Had the opportunity to sit with Elise a little bit ago and read it before it came out publicly. And want to thank her leadership to, as the chair of that subcommittee in putting it together. I've always felt that the feedback that I've gotten has been really valuable to me, both personally and professionally. And also does help steer the direction of the district. So it's an important process to go through. And as I've said all the time, my work happens through and with other people. And it really is, I think, a team evaluation in so many ways, because there are folks here in central office, there are leaders in the building and faculty and staff members who are carrying out SEL, who are taking that data, who are leading professional development. And so informing policy and working to develop the budget, among other things. And so I do have to share this with, with the team, the folks sitting here tonight, as well as others in the district. I've always thought that this is something, it's always uncomfortable, because I think it reflects really the work of so many people. And, and I appreciate, I appreciate your input and your feedback. But because this represents the work of so many people, I'm so sad to be leaving, but I know that you're in very capable and very good hands going forward. And, and there's going to be more great news headlines coming out of Franklin of all this great student outcomes and student achievements.
That's true. There will be. I don't doubt it. And next year, the evaluation is going to be so much more robust. So much more. In good way. Okay, so next item, see revised FY23 budget.
I'm going to turn it over to Miriam.
Sure. So you have a memo in your packet asking that you approve a revised budget adding a, an allocation of $3,829 to be allocated to a specialist teacher salary line item at Franklin High School. The reason for this additional allocation is, as you recall, you approved a budget back in April. That was in fact $3,829 less than what the town approved after you approved your budget on May 27. So right now, the recommendation before you is to approve a budget in the amount of $70,220,825.
Is there a motion to approve the revised FY23 budget amount of $70,220,825? That's discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? No, seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Meal prices, next. School meal prices, again, a memo in your packet. I, I won't, I won't read it for you. But I will summarize for the public, the UCA waivers are going away effective June 30th. They will be expiring. The waivers allowed for free lunch for all students. Prior to the pandemic, free lunch was only eligible for students who were eligible for free or reduced price meals at a reduced price. So in preparation for that, we are requesting a, an increase to meal pricing in light of increasing meal, food costs, increasing maintenance costs, other expenses that are increasing. The program itself is, operates self-sufficiently at this point, needs to operate self-sufficiently. The appropriation budget that you just approved doesn't include any appropriation for food services. The recommended price increase in meals is looking at a 50 cent increase across the board for lunch and a 20 cent increase in breakfast. The minimum price target that the Department of Ed has set at this point in time is $3.31. So our elementary pricing would go up to $3.25, middle school lunch pricing, elementary lunch size. Middle school lunch pricing would go to $3.50 and high school lunch would be $3.75. And our breakfast across the district would be $2. So that is the recommendation before you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion to increase the meal prices for the 2223 school year as detailed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions or questions from Miriam?
So, yeah, one thing. So with the, with the free lunch going away, do we have plans in the district to cascade around how, what's the eligibility for these programs if people aren't aware? Just so that they're not caught off guard or just eligible and they just don't miss out?
Sure. So, so one thing I did want to add to you is to, to let you know as well is that there is some discussion at the state level right now to maintain free lunch for students. We don't know what that outcome is going to be at this point in time. The House budget included that. The Senate budget does not include that. They are going to go to conference. We'll see where it ends up. In the event that, that it does not pass, then meals would be at a cost. Parents who are eligible for free or reduced price meals, if, if they don't know they're eligible, they can apply online or get a paper copy of an application that will be out in the middle of August. It looks for household income and household size. And there are determination levels based on the poverty level. So we will be accepting those applications once the application comes out from the Department of Ed in, in the middle of August. And then families who might not, might not meet the reduced price allocation eligibility guidelines have an opportunity for maybe potentially some financial assistance through the school committee policy. I don't know exactly the letters of the policy, but it's on the finance department website. And the application for free reduced meals is also on the food services website on our district website.
Great. Thank you, Miriam. Help that out? Dave Callahan?
Yeah. It's disappointing that we're kind of having this conversation, the, the free lunches for everybody just level set. Yeah, it provided a level playing field. Suppose for, for, you know, our civics projects, if there's anybody that, that is interested, you know, and, and, you know, petitioning out to, to the state house, this would, this is a spectacular one to try to push. And then just to kind of piggyback on Miriam, what you're talking about with the free and reduced lunches. I think that, and please kind of correct me if I'm wrong or elaborate, but when we were doing the site visit, this was a conversation that kind of came up and the schools, the admin, the, the lunch service employees, everybody does a great job of making it very discreet action that's done. So, you know, so the students don't kind of have any stigma attached to it. So for any, any parents, any families that are in need of some of these services, please, please don't hesitate to reach out. And again, you know, admin just did a fantastic job of making sure that, you know, the students aren't aware of any of the differences. So please don't hesitate to, to reach out and ask for help.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Great. So we have a motion and a second. So the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Moving on, refund of graduating seniors' meal balances.
So, as you just heard, meals were free this year. While we did be continuing, while we did begin charging for some à la carte items, because we're, meals were free this year, we, seniors did not necessarily have as much opportunity to spend the balances on their account. So there are 93 seniors in the district with a positive balance in excess of $10. Without a younger sibling, if there was a younger sibling in the household, we automatically transferred the funds from the seniors' account to the younger sibling. And we are recommending at this point that refunds be issued for those 93 families or 93 students, it could be fewer families. Total value of refunds would equate to $3,868.50. This would be a waiver to your policy EFD, which was discussed at the policy subcommittee meeting, as well as the budget subcommittee briefly on June 8th and June 9th. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Is there a motion to make an exception to policy EFD for the school year 2122 to refund meal account balances over $10 for graduating seniors with no younger siblings as detailed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions from Miriam? I think it's efficient if you talk about it in the subcommittees first, because then people already know about it. Okay, great. So the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Great. So discussion only items. I know it's late, but I'm going to pause our business for a moment for us to pay tribute to Dr. Ahern. As she nears the end of her time with the Franklin Schools, this will be her last school committee meeting with us. I'd like to invite our former school committee chairperson and vice chairperson to come to the front of the room. They've been waiting very patiently. Sit where, where you want to sit. Sit where you want to sit. You paid your time. You can sit wherever you're most comfortable. You can sit with the
Yeah, I've got to say, Anne and I were chatting back there a little bit. Oh, we missed this so much.
It's only 10 o'clock. We've got another hour, ain't we? We're glad to have you back.
I will get into it.
Take the floor.
I hope this comes out. Okay, well, thank you for the opportunity to share your thoughts tonight. It doesn't seem like it was several years ago that I and others joined you at your first school committee meeting. And here we are at your last. It's not a packed house. Your first one was either.
It has been since.
Now, after watching your interview with the Marsfield School Committee, I was reminded why we wanted you to join us here in Franklin. Articulate, intelligent and passionate about education, thoughtful, kind and considerate are just some of the things that come to mind. As I mentioned, after your selection, as I mentioned to you, it was like, why did it take them so long to offer you the position? I thought they were going to offer it to you right there on the spot. I'll never forget the phone call we made to you upstairs in the training room, asking if you would join us as our superintendent. And we were delighted when you said yes. And we were delighted when you said yes. We were actually jumping for joy. And you came on board and quickly owned the position. Was it always perfect? Of course not. Did you do a great job? Of course you did. You took everything in, assessed each situation, and never made decisions blindly, knowing that your decisions could impact every student in the district. And knowing how much you like to take credit, I'd like to give a huge shout out to your admin team because you all did it together. From policy to school start times, Davis Thayer, to the pandemic, you led with confidence and grace. The pandemic didn't come with a handbook. It was new to all of us and we just did the best that we could. Thank God it's almost over, maybe. While the majority of school committee members were so supportive of you during your tenure, most people don't know of how supportive you were to several of us during extremely difficult situations in our lives. For that, I'll always be grateful and I know others will be too. While this is all about you right now, Sarah, I can't miss the chance to congratulate Lucas on his selection as our next superintendent and look forward to your success as Lucas. Best wishes to you and your family in Barnstable. I, we're also fortunate that you've been our superintendent, Sarah. We'll miss you and our losses, their gain. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm nice.
Thanks for letting me have this opportunity. I know Sarah doesn't like it ever to be about her. We know that. She's always the first to point to the team, which is true. She is surrounded by incredible people and she is right to recognize them always. It is why she is such a strong leader. It was such an honor to work with Sarah during perhaps one of the most tumultuous times in our history. When it would have been easy to sort of raise a finger and check which way the political winds were blowing. Sarah looked to her heart, guided by wisdom, a keen intellect, and her compassionate nature. Knowing it's not possible to please all the people all of the time, but it was always with Sarah about doing the right thing. Sarah, we owe you a debt of gratitude. You led us all through the many storms with dignity and grace. You will be missed. We know Lucas will take the wheel and do a great job. You two have supported each other and been a great team. We wish you the very best and know you will continue using your gifts and talents to make a difference in the lives of kids. So thanks, Sarah. We love you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. And your patience is, is, we're very grateful for your patience. This has been a very long meeting. Other committee members, anybody else want to share a few words? Dave Callahan?
Yeah, I truly kind of echo everyone's sentiment. Thank you so much for, for everything that you've done for the district, for, for my kids. You know, you really kind of set us off on a great path forward and I know that you're going to do tremendous work over in Barnstable. And thank you guys for bringing it to Franklin in the first place too. Truly appreciate that.
Very true. Good point. Al Charles?
Yeah. Just, yes, thank you for your time. You don't have to be the loudest person in the room to make an impact and you have been felt everywhere you've gone. Behind the scenes, helping the central office, helping the leaders of our super, our principals, our faculty just really provide the best for our students and we couldn't have done this without you. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, for your hard work and dedication to our community. We're much better for having had you and just wish you all the best in this next stage of your life. Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you and I really like your candor and professionalism. It's, you know, great.
I'd like to recognize your professionalism as well and your grace and plumb under pressure. I'd also like to use the word compersion, which is something I only learned a few years ago and is the sympathetic joy for someone else, even when their happiness doesn't benefit you. And I think all of us feel compersion for your choice to be closer to home and to follow your own self-determined path, even if it doesn't benefit us directly. Certainly that's made easier with knowing that Lucas will follow in your stead, but we're very happy for you.
Should have gone before Camille. I didn't know. I was feeling that. I didn't have a word for it.
I cried like three times.
Sarah, the last few years have been a roller coaster, a whirlwind, nightmare times. But through it all, I was confident in your ability to get us through. You modeled an extreme growth mindset through the pandemic. You embraced the challenges of pivoting and offering grace and now you're an H V A C expert. Who knew? We know superintendents can't make everyone happy, but you remained focused on doing what's best for our future generation. You showed compassion for each individual in your care. Your leadership decisions were so thoughtful, organized, inclusive, and data-based, and that made our jobs easier. I'm grateful to have had the honor of working with you for the last two and a half plus years, which felt like a decade maybe. And I wish you all the best in your, your chapter. Thank you. We got you a parting gift, which is just a small token of our great big appreciation for your steadfast leadership and deep commitment to the Franklin Public Schools over these last five years. Dave Callahan wanted to buy a weak spindly Chris, Charlie Brown Christmas tree type of plant because he knew that you could nurture it and give it the right support. It was a metaphor and I'm like, I don't think it's going to be as good a presentation, but the story, the story.
It was just so, got that big pole.
Right, right. See the plants. It's actually Denise Miller who takes care of it. I aspire to be a gardener, but it hasn't happened. But thank you. I, it's been an absolute honor to serve as a superintendent here in Franklin and it has just felt like the perfect fit. I remember the phone call from the school committee and I thought it was just, it was so warm and welcoming and I could hear the cheers in the background when I got hired. And it just felt so good to be coming aboard, not having been a superintendent and just having the faith of the committee at that time in, in my work and applying my growth mindset to myself. I am not the same person and the same superintendent and the same leader I was when I started and that is because of your influence and the community's influence on me and, and how much I've grown. And it's so bittersweet for me. And, and so sad for me. And I have felt the compersion every step of the way. And I just, I mean, it's just a tribute and a testament to how wonderful and beautiful the people in Franklin are to continue to feel supported as I kind of merge my personal and professional life together instead of being separated and stretched then. I want to thank each and every member of the school committees that I have worked with. You, it is a difficult, sometimes thankless and grossly underpaid. And by that, I mean volunteer job. We weathered the pandemic together, but I took a paycheck home every other week. And you were there through thick and thin and would have been some really turbulent and very, very difficult times, always having my back. Franklin students are in great hands with a very talented set of leaders, continuing upon a tremendous foundation. And as I, as they had been when I arrived, the faculty and staff are incredibly dedicated and committed who are invested in the student outcomes. And over and over and over again, our core values have, have driven us each and every day, social emotional development, a safe and inclusive school culture, high expectations for student success, and the collaborative community. And those four core values drove the decisions, drove those, some of the commendations that you put in there, you know, were certainly related to the core values. We've weathered quite a storm together. Unfortunately, this storm has threatened the fabric of our society and has laid bare injustices, deep wounds, and intense emotions at a time when people are both reactionary and weary. And I would just hope that the community reflects on the consensus of the vision of the portrait of a graduate and work together, especially through disagreements towards positive outcomes for each and every child in Franklin. I am your biggest champion and your biggest cheerleader. I'll continue to be happy in celebrating your amazing successes. As one administrator told me when I joined here, frankly, Franklin is a truly special and remarkable place. And indeed it is. Thank you for everything. I'm going to miss it. But come visit. It keeps a great place to, just a phone call away.
Thank you, Sarah. That was beautiful. Let's move on to information matters. Dave O'Neill. It's late.
Budget subcommittee met last Thursday, June 9th, where we discussed the school meal price increases and revised F Y 23 budget that we detailed this evening. We do not have another meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Policy, Dave Teague.
All right. We just had our meeting the day before. The couple of items, non-discrimination and harassment was up on the agenda, but that's still out with our legal team. It's expected to kind of come back in a few weeks where we will plan to meet somewhere in the middle of July. We discussed some of the meal charge policy, but actually the language of the policy itself, kind of bringing it more in line with the updated health and wellness from the SWAC, the policy that we kind of passed at our last meeting, we can kind of expect that to come up over the next couple of meetings, because we'll continue to work on that. But kind of the bigger point at our last meeting is this Dr. Hearn had mentioned during her superintendent's report is that we also had a discussion about safety programs, emergency plan, and also the safety crisis intervention plan. While we did kind of taking a look at the policy language itself, a lot of it was just to initiate a lot of the conversations from some of the really robust conversations that we had throughout that meeting. It led to a lot of the topics that Dr. Hearn had brought up, which is great, to really talk about just how intricate all of the plans are that we currently have. Jolly about her being an HVAC expert. She also mentioned about how much she knows about the electrical grids in Franklin as well. And, you know, because we really do have a comprehensive, a lot of comprehensive plans. We have some great school resource officers, one of which, Officer Gove was here throughout much of the meeting in the beginning as well. So Franklin is just doing, you know, really is doing a tremendous job. There's always more work to be done. There's always more reevaluations. We do plan to continue to look at that at future policy meetings. There's also going to be some updates on our website about more information that can be shared. I think Lucas is kind of chomping on the bit if you want to elaborate on.
I don't want to.
But, uh, but yeah, there will be some more updates in the future. Kind of just pertaining to some of our emergency plans, some of the ways in which family members can reach out, kind of reconnect with some students and even certain emergencies. But ultimately, really wanted to kind of bring this up at our policy meetings. We can start a lot of those conversations and also relay a lot of everything to the community that this is something that central office of this committee as well, members of admin are continually working on the, the safety and security of all of our students and all of our buildings.
Great. Thank you. Community relations, Camille.
Yes, we had a meet and greet at Birchwood Bakery on June 4th. There were no visitors. But we advertised, I think people, you know, it's near the end of the year and we will have another one in September. And also I'm, I'm heartened that at the strawberry stroll, we had quite a number of visitors. Our favorites were the new families who were new with brand new kindergarteners and they were excitedly telling them about the school that they would join. Parents appreciated the calendars that they could put on their refrigerators and also the Q R codes that Lily created so that they could get budget information and also schedules and sign up for the newsletters.
Yeah.
So yes, as Camille had mentioned, the, the calendars were, were hit. The parents loved that. One suggestion that they'd made was could we get magnets, calendars that were just put on the fridge? So maybe some of them we consider for harvest fest.
That's a great idea. That's how I keep track of the path schedule. It's like a realtor magnet.
Exactly.
As long as it includes the half day times. Just let's keep that in mind.
Can you just chime in? Just as a, a parent of incoming kindergartner, the class of 2035, which is crazy, but that, that brochure, well, it really was, it was terrific. It provided so much information. It was beautifully presented. And so just as, as a parent, not a school committee member, wanted to thank you. That was, that was great to, to see. And again, just also put class of 2035 was just rather wild.
Okay. Do we have anything else, Al, on space needs and facilities in the last couple, half an hour?
Oh, I got some more bullet points. I kind of held off.
We can just do it again. Okay. Joint P C C?
No meetings for the rest of this year, so.
Gotcha. That makes sense. That makes sense. Okay. Substance abuse task force, any updates or do you guys meet in the summer?
We don't meet in the summer as, as a group, but there's some ongoing work that happens throughout the summer where we coordinate and plan and meet with the Safe Coalition to prep for the next year.
Okay. Great. Thank you. D E I committee, we had our last meeting of the school year where we summarized our progress up to this point and discussed a variety of ways to share our work with the school community. The D E I committee will continue this important work next year in collaboration with our new D E I director, Ms. Heidi Harris. Consent agenda?
Okay. You want to hold anything for discussion? Let me know. Say hold. I recommend approval of the minutes from the May 24th, 2022 school committee meeting agenda as detailed. I recommend acceptance of a check for $275 for in-house enrichment as detailed. I recommend acceptance of two checks totaling $974 from the music boosters for in-house enrichment as detailed. I recommend acceptance of a check for $1,600 from the Jefferson, J F K, Parmenter, and Keller P C Cs for in-house enrichment as detailed. And I recommend acceptance of a check for $200 from the Parmenter P C C for field trips as detailed. And I recommend acceptance of a check of $285 from B J's Wholesale Club for district-wide in-house enrichment as detailed.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Citizens comments. Are there any citizens in the audience in person or online who would like to make a comment on an item that is not on tonight's agenda and falls within the community's purview, for example, the budget or policies? Yes. Oh, wait, there's a statement I have to read. Give me a second. You're totally welcome to be here. I'm, I'm glad you're here. Thank you for speaking up. Okay. In the spirit of open communication, the committee will hold a public participation segment, also called system comments, about matters not related to an agenda item within the school committee's purview. Citizens comments is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between or among citizens in the school committee. It is intended to offer citizens an opportunity to express their opinions on issues of school committee business. The committee will listen to but not respond to any comment made. If you could state your name, address, and please keep within the three minutes.
Steve Tralax, Ken Lawrence Drive, volunteering as community information director for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio, Franklin TV.
Franklin Public Radio, Franklin TV. Very quickly, a lot has already been said. Thanks, Sarah. Thank you. Since I'm your only citizen here last night. Thank you. I'll miss you. I know you'll do well.
Thank you.
Lucas, come on. We've got some work to do.
Big shoes to fill there.
Yeah, there's a lot of work to do, and to you, community, it's committee, excuse me. Because you're all volunteers like I am. There's a lot of work ahead of you. The space needs, the one piece, actually, it brings up other questions. We'll get to more of that because you've got recommendations that are still going to be digested. Restructuring the district, I think, is one piece that will come up as part of that, but wasn't really mentioned, so just in case. And then I think as you start getting into the timing of that, the school start times may also come back again. So just putting those out there for everybody else to think about, because aside from your two major pieces, hiring a superintendent, and obviously, one's going away and one's coming in, the district structure and then coordinating that piece, including the budget, and there is a significant budget impact in terms of how the district operates. You've got a lot of work ahead of us. We're here to help. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? I don't see any hands on mine. Okay. New business, Dr. Hearn.
So this is my last meeting. The school committee typically meets on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. There is a meeting scheduled for June twenty-eighth, but I think the agenda is TBD. Not quite sure the direction of that. And then you have a meeting in July, and where you typically set up your presentation schedule for the year.
Yeah, that's a good reminder at the first meeting in July. Okay. Great. I was wondering if maybe at the June, the next meeting, we could have a personnel update just as far as like where we are with hiring, you know, positions and admin and central office and the whole bit, that I think would be helpful. Thank you. Finally, we will be adjourning to executive session and will not be returning to open meeting. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the FEA R N unit as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and the Chair so declares. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A two, to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive discussion as discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote will come on the motion. We need to do a roll call vote. Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Aye.
Yes.
Steve Ziegler? Yes, yeah, Louise Stokes, yes.